He would have liked that. He was running around like a crazy person. I was like, oh, God.
I'll still never forget that day that I was in, Jeff was here, one of the citizens member went in that crazy.
The oldest of them, we did the ribbon cutting for Westwood, like walked up there with me, stood behind the ribbon. I was like, okay.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Hurts mom beyond the council.
We are on the air. Good evening. Welcome to the city council study session of June 5th, 2018. We have two items on our agenda. Item number one is discussion regarding the proposed F Y E 2019 City of Norman operating and capital budget and possible amendments. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Anthony Francisco, our finance director, to do a presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am Anthony Francisco, the finance director. We have come to this point in the budget process where we are awaiting final direction on some various things and amendments that we've heard that are needed to the budget that was presented to you during the month of April. There's three amendments that have been presented to you in our June 1st memo, and we can discuss those. They're pretty straightforward. The first one is addition of $30,000 in the seizures and restitution fund. There was an approved recommendation for $30,000 for the purchase of vehicle barriers, but those vehicle barriers cost a total of $60,000. It was thought that you could kind of do it in pieces, but apparently you can't. So this amendment is to make the full purchase of $60,000 as a proposal. The second is kind of an annual thing that we do after the council has received the CDBG and Home program budgets. We true up the city's budget for what's in those CDBG and Home budgets. And this year, that is an increase of $190,644 to what was in the city manager's proposed budget. And then the third proposed budget is just the annual grammatical and typographical error motion such that we can make changes that don't have any financial impact to the budget, but just correct those things that we have caught typos and that sort of thing.
We do that every year.
Yes, ma'am. So we'll be glad to respond to any questions that you have on any of those three proposed amendments. We would ask that you bring those forward at the council meeting next week, and then we'll open it up to any other questions or comments that you have.
I think the motions are all pretty straightforward. I think they've often discussed. Councilmember Holman.
So these vehicle barriers, what are they? What do they look like? And when would they be used?
They would be used, they'll be used on game day or other events to keep traffic from going through large crowds of people.
Similar to what O U P D already uses.
On the one end, that's a little fancier than what these will be, but these are just barriers that hook together to block off an area.
Are they steel, concrete?
They're steel.
They're $30,000 each, or that's?
No, no, no. $60,000 for enough barriers to block that area off on campus corner.
Okay.
These are the same barriers that we would use for other events like music festival where you have large crowds trying to keep traffic from getting into it.
That was one of my questions was, so they would, sorry.
Councilmember Allison.
They'd be available for other events, like when we need to block off, you know, Main Street for those different events, and we don't want people driving into crowds. And would we have a policy put in place on how those event organizers could use them? Would they be charged? Or would it be up to the city, police department, if they felt it was needed based on the crowd size? Would that kind of be, I mean, that's probably not your department. That's.
It depends on the event, but in many instances, as a part of the event permit, there'll be some agreements about things that the organizer might pay for and the city might provide.
Okay.
We've talked about it quite a bit with the special events, our large special events. Myself and Captain Hawkins at the police department have had many conversations about trying to make sure that the crowd is safe. So we've been looking at doing something like this for a couple of years. And so at this time, we haven't had any discussions about whether or not they would be charged for the use of the actual barricades or the barriers. But depending on the type of event, size, timing of day, once we evaluate that, it would be determined whether or not to use them.
Yeah, it'd be good that they're available to those other events besides stuff that's happening on campus corner to keep everyone safe.
Other questions?
We also provided to council some information as background information related to some various positions that various council members have discussed. It is just that background information. You may want to come forward with some or all of these changes if you want to. We would remind you that if you decide to, the motion from council would be just to appropriate the money, and then we could move forward. The first one is the sustainability officer. And the H R director has done a lot of work on research with these various positions that the city of Norman currently does not have, looking at various cities that might, and kind of putting together these sorts of, not really what you call a job description, but just sort of things that that position might be called upon to do. So again, this is by no means final or anything like that. If you decided to move forward, this is just our first draft at what those position duties might be. So if you wanted to move forward with them, and you have some different areas that these positions might go for, you would certainly provide that information to staff or to the city manager, and we work from there. The second one is an A D A technician. The discussion was about some staffing to support the public works director in his role as the A D A coordinator. And again, this is not by any means final, just some things that we thought that position might entail.
We'll just add to that. The final presentation on the A D A update plan will be coming next Tuesday night. So you'll be able to see kind of the whole framework of all of that recommendation.
Then you have a proposed municipal accountant, one position. This is the position that was discussed, that would be basically providing services in support of capital projects in the Norman Municipal Authority, where the goal might be to avoid the payment of sales tax on Norman Municipal Authority projects. Obviously, there's a lot of work involved in doing that, in that the city staff in the form of N N A staff would have to make the material purchases for those projects, pay the invoices, make sure that the things that have been purchased are actually being used for those projects. So we kind of envision it as municipal accountant position might be classified as something else, but this is a listing of some of those jobs that might be assigned to that position. And then, yes, ma'am.
This seems like a position that could kind of pay for itself in savings?
Well, not necessarily. It could, the projects could pay for it. In other words, where the Norman Municipal Authority is acting on behalf of Norman Forward Projects, Norman Forward might pay for part of the position, where it's serving public safety sales tax positions. Some of the public safety sales tax projects might pay for some of the position as far as, you know, the savings is just kind of coming in one pocket, not the other.
Gotcha. So you're not thinking that it's going to save us enough in the, it would come from the projects, but could it come from the taxes that we save?
Remember, the taxes come to the general fund.
Right.
The savings would accrue to those areas that.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Castleberry.
Clarification, would this be in the general fund budget or would it be the municipal authority budget?
The proposal would be that it would be in the general fund budget because staff to the Norman Municipal Authority is in the general fund.
Other question, Councilmember Alton.
So you said we would just be moving money from pocket to other, but on state sales tax, we wouldn't be?
That's correct.
So we would be saving money there. I mean, so it's not like we're just saving money in one pocket that's going into the general fund, where we'd be saving money that's going to another entity as well. So I think it is more than just moving money from one pocket to another.
I think it's October, maybe September, but either September, October, finance, we got a memo on there, and it's about $208,000 a year savings on what it would have been on just the last Norman Forward project.
Yeah, that was just on the.
Just on the.
Library or?
No, the.
Westwood.
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 Cool.
That's all, yeah.
That's a $10 million project, so on the library, it could have been close to.
The question would be materials versus labor on each of those projects. And then finally, is the internal audit.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Cardula.
I'm sorry, you're ready to move on. So we don't have the current staffing to take care of this, then? I assume you've talked about this in finance committee. Is that why we would need an additional position?
Yes, ma'am. At least as it related in the discussion tended towards the Norman Forward Projects, the Parks Department, who is staffed with those major projects, does not have the excess staff to really take that on.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
And then finally, is the internal audit function that has been discussed. We, in the city manager's proposed budget, submitted the, basically, these two positions that would be serving an internal audit function. There has been discussion of an internal auditor, but if we're going to do it, we should do it right. And to do it right, it is a function. It's not just a person. Because an internal auditor who is highly qualified, you went on CPA sort of thing, would want to have a staff, whether it's an analytical staff or a clerical staff. So what's proposed here are two positions. One, that is the internal auditor, who will report directly to council, carry out those projects that council assigns to that function, and then a sort of a clerical analyst type person who would do data entry analysis of proposals that are before the internal audit function, and then move forward. So again, those are the things that we have heard discussion of, and we'll certainly do any further analysis of anything else that council wants to look at as we move forward with the budget process.
Councilmember Clark.
Did I hear you correctly that the internal auditor and technician were in the budget, but the other ones were not?
No, but it was a request, yeah, but they were not approved or recommended.
Councilmember Wilson, then. Councilmember Cardula.
So, I mean, like, I want to buy all these people. I think this would be great, but at what expense? What are, where are we cutting to get this money if we were to approve this?
And that's certainly a question to reconsideration. I mean, and again, the reason that the internal auditor, for example, was not included in the city manager's proposed budget is that it was not deemed that we could afford to add any position. So, yeah, that's something the council needs to consider.
And do we feel, kind of additional question, that any of these positions, as this one might actually generate some funds back into, would any of these positions free up money to sustain themselves? Like, I feel like the internal auditor probably could theoretically.
Well, again, it kind of depends on how you look at it. What council assigns to the internal auditor may or may not be designed to save money or to generate new revenue. That's up to you all, what you would assign that person to do. But as an example, one thing that, you know, just last council meeting, you were talking about hiring a consultant to do this internal, look at the University Norah Park Entertainment District proposal. Well, instead of paying a consultant, a few hundred thousand dollars, that's something that you might assign to the internal auditor to do. Again, that's totally up to council.
And I'm hearing you say that this is at the direction of council. So this person reports to council?
That's the proposal, yes, ma'am. And that's usually the case. I've worked for, I've worked for several cities that had an internal audit function, and each of them reported directly to the council. That obviously would require some changes to the city code and perhaps the city charter.
That's what my next question was going to be, what's the [inaudible].
Okay. Councilmember Cardula.
So Councilmember Wilson asked a lot of my questions. How would this fit in, Anthony, with what your office does? Or how would it supplement what your office does?
By definition, may or may not. Internal auditor has to be independent of, obviously, one of the main things they may look at is operations in the finance department. So you would want them to be independent of, you wouldn't want them reporting to the finance director, wouldn't.
Right.
And the suspicion is that the finance director is committing fraud, and so.
Councilmember Holman.
Not that I am, but just.
And to be clear, I don't think anybody's saying that.
Oh, yeah. Councilmember Holman.
Just to be clear, so it would be its own department of two?
It would be a division of the city council department.
Okay. So who can, who could hire or fire this person? Us or the city manager?
Only us. The final hiring decision would be up to council.
So we would have two, that's, okay. So we'd have two employees.
Councilmember Clark.
I think an argument could be made that a sustainability officer could pay for itself if we start looking at, you know, cutting back on our own utility bills here through the city of Norman. And hasn't Norman Public Schools done something similar to that?
They have an energy, they call it the energies are, but it's an energy officer or director, and his job, now, sustainability officer could do more than that, but the energy coordinator for the director for the school system, the main thing that they look at is use of energy in the buildings, the lights, the heat, the air, the, I mean, those are enormous costs for the school system. They would, they're also enormous costs for the city of Norman. Not as much, because we don't have as many buildings, but that they believe that it, my understanding is, for many years in the school system, that it pays, that it more than pays for itself. Now, we'd have to look at that, but I think there, I think you could make a case that they, depending on what all you have them do, and then there's always the possibility of writing grants and getting money in other ways in addition to just, and education, helping to educate staff and people about, you know, better uses of energy. Yeah.
I would argue that with discussions of a tree code and, you know, need of a forester and the passing of resolutions like Ready for 100, if we're going to do that correctly, then we should have someone in place from the beginning to guide it along.
No. Well, absolutely.
Thank you. No. But, so my follow-up question would be, what is the process for, let's say we want all of them, where do we, because you touched on that, where do we find it from?
At this meeting, you might direct us to say you want all of them, and you want us to prepare language for amendments for council to add allocations in these areas. Because again, you're not saying sustainability officer. You are appropriating, you know.
Seventy-six or whatever.
Yeah, $77,000 in this area. But yes, we would then provide that language to you. One of the council members would make that motion at next week's meeting, and then it would be added to the budget.
I'm interested in certainly adding the internal auditor position, the municipal accountant, and sustainability officer, because I think they'll pay for themselves. I'm also interested in.
If I may ask, okay, now, remember that if you're not going to negatively impact the bottom line, then you would have to also identify what those revenues are that are going to pay for the position.
That's kind of hard to do the first year, though, isn't it?
I don't know.
Well, I mean, Kim.
Means you have to have, you've got to have some money there as a backup, because you can't, you can't budget on an assumption.
I assumed that we would go ahead and budget it and then after the first year.
So you would be taking it out of something. I think Councilmember Holman had his hand up before.
Whatever. Hold on, I'm not done yet.
I'd already asked.
Okay. All right.
Oh, not done yet.
Oh, Councilmember Clark, still going.
If we move those positions forward, I think it'd be great at the end of next year to see how much they did save for us. That would be crucial. And with the A D A technician, while it may not fund itself, I think it's a huge endeavor that Sean O'Leary's taking on with these plans and the upgrades that we're going to need to make, and it's part of being the inclusive community. So I'd support that one as well.
Now I'm done. Councilmember Wilson.
I support everything that Councilmember Clark said. I would like to also request some information around what we have set aside for consultants in this area. Do we have money that we've kind of put in a fund to pay for consultants? I mean, that we're, you know, we have, I know we had a, I don't, is this internal auditor going to help us in, like, the situation where we had the short up projects from federal grants and those kinds of things, where we ended up having to pay?
I'm not sure what that was about. But again, it would, I'll depend on what council assigns to the internal auditor.
Are you referring to the stuff from the state, when they can build us all that amount afterwards?
Yeah, when they came back and audited us in hindsight, and, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good example of something that might be assigned to the internal auditor.
And so then, I know we were able to come up with that money at that time to pay those things. Maybe we knew a little bit in advance that that needed to happen, but do we have those funds? So I guess I would need more information via email or whatever to understand where we could get the money for this.
You'd either be taking it out of the general fund, or you would be, you know, making some assumption of a revenue source that the internal auditor is going to identify to pay for itself. Now, in the example that you just gave, where the internal auditor is examining what the state said we owe, and what the state said was due to us, that is a classic examination for an internal auditor. And they may have identified that the state said that we owe $1.8 million, and the internal auditor said we only owe $1.6, okay? But we're still paying $1.6 million. It's just that we didn't have to find as much. So again, the benefit of an internal auditor is not necessarily new revenue. It's, it can be savings, but that doesn't benefit the bottom line.
Councilmember Castleberry.
So I think in all these positions, when you make the motion on this, it is to add an expense to, we're not adding revenue.
Right.
That's correct.
So, I mean, you just, so we lose $2 million, we're going to lose $2.2 million, wherever. You're not revenue generating, you're cost savers, and you can't place cost savers.
Councilmember Cardula. So that means we all have to go home and do our homework, right, where we're going to find the money for these. In concurrence with Councilmember Clark, I see needs for all of these, the sustainability officer particularly, we've talked about it several points with issues from the community planning and transportation committee with an ongoing attempt for a tree ordinance. There will be no one to enforce a tree ordinance without this type of position. I know Judd Foster does an admirable job, but he does not have enough staff to oversee that. And we have tasked the tree board with finishing that tree ordinance. It will be done, I assume, sometime, maybe in the fall. Wasn't that the impression that they left us with? And if we don't have a position like this, then that will not be done properly. And I know from specifically my board and people in the, in the central part of Norman, that's important to them. So that's something that I take seriously. I think we need to pay attention to. One of the things that's not really present in this job duties and responsibilities that we talked about, and I apologize, I probably didn't bring this up before, but I think the position really needs to express kind of being an ombudsman for environmental issues between citizens and, I mean, it says here, like, acts as a city liaison, but that's for the city. And I think we perceive the position to be available to citizens, between citizens and the city, for green issues. And in that, when I looked over it again, I was like, that's lacking to me. So for instance, when the utility companies come in and are making cuts to trees around, maybe for safety issues, but this would be the person that could be called, instead of citizens having to call the action line and not knowing and just having to leave a message. So I think we need to think of this position as an ombudsman for all environmental green sort of issues. I think that's important to our citizens in town. Additionally, since we cannot hire, and this would not be its own division, somewhat of, and I'm not sure if this can happen, so I don't know, or maybe, maybe Judd can even speak to this, is it possible to find somebody that has urban forestry experience? Can we include that in the education slash required skills? I think we can.
It's just a matter of, I mean, there are really two separate degree tracks here. As you said, one's environmental science, environmental engineering, and urban forestry.
Right, and it talks about water and all, and we really do want all of those things, and we're asking a lot for one particular person, but I do think that that needs to be added in here. We did used to have an urban forester. That position was terminated. I can't remember when, but I know it has been terminated. So if we can add that in, as, what, 10 years ago or so?
About 2010, probably.
Okay, so less. But if we can add that in as well as what's already here, I think that fits with the direction that the council is moving in as far as what we're asking the citizens to put in for.
We'd like that change.
That would be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Castleberry.
And just to be clear, these will be each separate amendments. We'll vote them individually or we vote them as a package?
You could do it either way.
Either way. I think we should vote on them individually. Councilmember Holman.
I want all these positions, too. Just like our last several meetings, though, we've been talking about how we're going to avoid cutting stuff. A lot of stuff, transportation, things like that. And so, I mean, outside of, if you take away the reserve amount, you know, the deficit isn't as much, but still $600,000, $700,000 plus, adding a couple hundred thousand dollars in permanent positions. I think we need all these positions, and I think some of them could pay for themselves, too, but it's a little.
Kind of a risk.
How do we know before?
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I don't know.
Councilmember Holman is exactly right. I think we're in a very awkward position, and we've also had some press coverage about the state of our budget and the fix that we are, didn't you like that? That was very oaky. The fix that we're in, right, with the budget situation. However, one of the things that I can honestly say that I have learned during my time on council is that I do think we are particularly understaffed, particularly in areas, and I think most of us have seen that here on council during our time here. None of these positions are things, honestly, that I would look at and say, wow, that's extra. Boy, that sure would be nice. These are things that we're not currently doing that should be done. So for instance, the A D A technician position is really, what is that, Sean O'Leary's third job? Where is Sean? Is that your third, fourth job, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, so I think that it's important that people who live in this city understand that we are pretty, and the city manager, I think, can back this up, we are pretty leanly staffed, aren't we, for a city of our size?
Absolutely. We have a handout here to back that up, but yes, we are.
Okay, so we're not operating at the point where we should be cutting. We're operating at the point where we don't have enough people to get things accomplished. I, too, am worried about paying for these, and that's why I said we have to go do our homework then between now and next week, because we, at the dais, will have to vote on this budget. But I do think it's fair to say, we are not, not a well-staffed city in the sense where we have all the people to cover all of these particular positions. So it's our job to figure out what the city needs to do its job better. Right? It's not always perfect, but these are the things that have been brought to our attention.
Well, I will agree with much of what has been said. Several of these positions I've been very vocal about for quite a long time. And yes, we have a lean staff, and that's true. And I think we need these positions. I think every one of them is a bona fide request. I share the concerns that were expressed by Councilmember Holman. We have had several budget meetings where we've talked about, well, we shouldn't be going into reserves, and what is this money going to go for? And we know that we have some systemic budget issues. We've been waiting for sales tax to rebound. We don't have a pattern of that yet, of the rebound. And all I'm going to say is, and I do believe particularly a sustainability officer and the municipal accountant position, I mean, I can really see how they could, they could save us money. And even the A D A person maybe could write grants and do some other things. So I think there's all that potential in there. But what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see where the money's coming from, and I assume it's probably going to have And I assume it's probably going to have to come from reserves or something else that we have to cut from the budget. And then we look at both what we think we go ahead and fund now and maybe look at some, another position at the mid-year midterm evaluation. I mean, I think those are things we should be thinking about. And also I wonder if any of these positions could be hired that not, that, I want to say on a contract basis, that, that's not really the term I want, but with, are you saying no, they?
Well, I was trying to think of any that could be, but for the most part, I would envision these to be.
You don't think so? Because I was wondering if there was a way we could kind of test this out to see, you know, what it would do. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I've read some case studies where some businesses hire internal auditors, you know, privately to do that. They're not, they're not employees of the organization. But I know, Robert, you've done some of that in your prior life and you may have seen that, but, but it's pretty unusual, I think, of them.
It's do it on the cheap.
Yeah.
And you don't get the full benefit of it. It's really more project by project basis and you.
And that's what I meant, yeah.
So I'm, what I'm hearing is for these particular positions, you're probably talking about a full-time benefited employee.
That's, as I understand what you're proposing, yes.
I mean, we could stage some of these to come on at different times of the year. You know, we could have, instead of all, instead of budgeting 12 months for each of these positions, you could, we could roll those in at different stages.
Well, you're not gonna hire all of them July 1st.
That's right.
I mean, we know this.
Right.
Whatever your budget is not gonna be the full budget, it's gonna take a couple months to hire someone.
Right. And get set up and transitioned, so we could, we could try to feather those in.
If you did budget, you would have some savings there because you would have the full 12 months.
Okay, Councilmember Holman.
That full month, we budget for that.
So the internal auditor and their assistant make up, or together are the biggest chump together. And I think, I mean, we identified some possible legal ramifications, charter change to do that, so maybe we should hold off on that one until we know the answers to some of those questions. If we have to have the public vote to allow us to have this position because.
Can't we ask Jeff? He's here.
The vote would be to allow them to report to us.
Is that right, Jeff?
Yeah.
Yeah, the charter currently only allows the council to hire one employee and that's the city manager. So we would need to take a look at what type of language change we'd wanna propose to the voters to allow you to hire somebody else. You know, another approach would be just to hire them under the city manager and the city manager then, have the city manager hire the person, but to direct them to work more closely with the council. That may be a way to, to appreciate that.
That's what I'm thinking. For the audit committee, you would, you would hire and go through our normal personnel process and save benefits.
I think you turned it off over there.
But then we would have them report directly to us, just as.
So that may be a way to accomplish it without.
They could do in the meantime.
You're leaning on that worse.
They could report to the city manager in the meantime.
Are, are you auditioning for a job back there? Yes, environmental savings. Thank you so much. Okay.
I do have a question.
Councilmember Allison.
So looking at all these, on the, and the cost that says, you know, market salary comparisons, but have we, as we do with some other positions, there's other costs obviously associated.
Yes, sir.
With them. Are these just their salary?
These are just salaries.
Does it include, does it include benefits?
Yeah.
It doesn't include, one of the positions that kind, I mean, the position I actually see that actually has a lot more costs associated with it than even like internal auditor is the ADA technician, because we can hire someone, but they gotta have money to do their job. And Sean, do you guys have money in your department right now to execute any of your ADA plan?
You have possibly a vehicle on those kinds of bases and necessities, personally. Appreciate that, because you're right, they're gonna, that technician's gonna travel to various buildings, parks, that sort of thing. Yes, they'll be bored.
So I think we have to look at there, there's more than just what's on the paper, especially when it comes out with, I don't want to hire someone that we say, okay, we, we've hired this person, but now they can't do anything. They can't execute their job. It's like hiring a, you know, for lack of better terms, hiring a retail marketing coordinator, we're not having any incentives to give them to go out and recruit businesses. The, if they're, if they don't have the tools to do their job, then we gotta figure out if we want them or not. So I think there's more than just what's on paper on these costs. And that's what makes me even more nervous is, you know, yeah, internal auditor, they probably don't leave the buildings, they're not gonna need a vehicle, they're not gonna need a budget to, to do office supplies and such, but a sustainability officer is probably gonna need a vehicle.
No, I would think so.
I mean, because I'm, if, if they're gonna be more of energy, maybe not, but then again, they still have to go with other buildings. And then, this little accountant probably doesn't need a lot of supplies or, you know, vehicle.
You got payroll taxes and you got health insurance.
Yeah, you got payroll taxes and health insurance, so you 30% right away.
So you're a municipal accountant and you say 43 to 61, sorry, so say we say it's 50.
Well, you basically add $20,000 to any position, because, you know.
Okay, so if we say we're gonna budget 50, we actually make the amendment to for 70.
Yes, sir. And we'll have those total compensation costs for you.
Oh, you will? Okay. And, and we'll have it divided out. Here's what this is gonna cost and we think they're gonna need a car and, so that may be another reason to think about, maybe looking for, putting some of these later on until we kind of see how the budget's going to go and.
I just want to follow with Councilmember Allison's question about the ADA technician. Of course, you know, it's yet to be seen whether or not the council's gonna appoint an ADA committee. And if that does happen, this technician could work very closely with the committee as they go through their kind of startup phase, to get them up and running and help them be successful too. So the first year, they may be more dedicated to working on the, working with the committee and get it done.
Yeah, it'll be a lot of, a lot of planning.
Yeah.
That, the first year.
Yeah.
So, and maybe some, maybe there's some grants associated with that as well. And there's a lot of coordination with the disabilities community and the seniors community. Councilmember Wilson.
I think that was my question is, what, I guess, what are the, I, I have zero knowledge on the grants that are available in this area, so are, is that something that hap, is that?
I don't know.
Anybody know about, are there a lot of them out there?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know whether you could say there's a lot, and so much has been cut from federal budgets. It's, it's kind of, I, I don't know as much as I used to know about what's, what's out there.
Be something the ADA technician could answer for.
But we do have, we do have several organizations that deal with that all the time in our community that can serve as a resource.
And the other question that went with this is, is this a position that could be, ADA technician could be contracted? Is that a, somebody that could be like, come in and do like a consultant type thing that might be a little more cost effective and/or give us a decision-making opportunity to determine for the next year if we could afford a full-time one?
And there could also be people that would be in other organizations in the metro area that could be, that could be tapped to do this on a contract basis, if it wasn't a full-time job. I, you know.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on your comment with respect to grants. There's always a lot of grants out there, but the, you know, the secret to that is identifying the grants that you qualify for.
Yeah.
And the ones that you have some, you know, reasonable success of, of, you know, receiving those funds. So really what you do is you spend a lot of your time upfront trying to make sure you're a good match for that grant and see if you really qualify, you know, for the emphasis that they have. But, you know, just the shotgun approach to grantsmanship usually doesn't work out really well. You've gotta be more rifled in on, on what would work for us in Norman.
Okay. Okay, so I think we.
Okay, so my understanding is council wants to move forward with amendments for all of these positions. The one question that I had is about the municipal accountant, one. We could propose that, that that be paid for out of Norman Municipal Authority projects that we have on tap for next year. To the extent that the savings and sales tax from the projects is, is offset to the cost of them paying for their share of the position, is that something you want to do?
Absolutely, yes.
And then you'll, we'll get this other information before we actually vote on it. We'll have the other information about the, the total cost with benefits or whether or not they'll need transportation or what, what the other things that they might need to do their job and whether or not we do think that contracting for the ADA position is, is a possibility. And so we'll look at all, all those before.
So are you looking at just reducing the project cost?
Not reducing, it would be, one of the project costs would be to pay for, and let's say that, you know, the municipal.
If I'm gonna reduce the price, say we're doing the, we're in Griffin Park and we think there's $300,000 of savings on that, on that particular one. So are you gonna, instead of it being 7.3 million dollars, are you gonna drop it to 7 million dollars?
Yeah, one of the line item costs in the Griffin Park project would have been to payment, to pay sales tax. And let's say that it's $300,000. You're going to reduce the project by $300,000 and pay out of the project $40,000 or some portion of the cost of this position.
How's that square with, we normally charge about 5% overhead for each of those municipal authorities for accounting? You're gonna put this person in that division full-time?
We don't charge Norman Municipal Authority. We charge the utilities.
That's on top of the utilities, but we charge utilities same way.
Yeah, but I mean, this Norman Municipal Authority is not a utility, that's no.
So the 5% doesn't apply?
The 5% doesn't apply.
Okay. Other questions about positions? Okay.
We have one additional handout at different time we're presented.
Oh, yeah.
I think it'd be helpful to maybe help answer some of the questions that we've been receiving this week in terms of some of the operational reserves that we have, the difference between the 2% reserve, 3% operational reserve and the rainy day fund, so.
No, I, I expected that this was gonna be presented.
So, but this has come up from a council member this week, and so we wanted to be responsive and provide this additional information to you.
So what the city manager directed that I do is just try to make more subtle the presentation that's in your budget document related to reserves. And as you see there, our reserve policies are codified in the city code. It's in section 8-103 and it's discussed in your budget document on pages 57 through 59. But here's what they are in operation for this fiscal year and the proposed next fiscal year. The 2% emergency reserve allocation, and that is just that. It's an allocation. It's a line item in the budget that you are, that by this ordinance and by this city code section, you have to make that budget allocation. 2% of general fund expenditures, that works out to be 1.4 million dollars in fiscal year 18 and 1,473,000 in fiscal year 19. And of course, that number will change a little bit because of what you're, the actions you've just directed. So we did budget for that as we're moving further to the right, the estimated balance as of June 30th of this year. We still hope that we won't have to spend any of that, so that money will remain in the balance. And so there's no difference or no reserve or surplus for that item. It'll carry over into the fund balance, will carry over into fiscal year 19. So fiscal year 19, it will be 1,473,000. We have that in the city manager's proposed budget at 1,473,000. So there is no surplus or deficit there. That's above the line, if you will. That is a budgeted item. Now, of fund balance, that's below the line, below the operational reserve revenues and expenditures, there is a requirement that we have to have at least a 3% operational reserve of general fund balance. By that requirement, we would need to have 2,179,692 of general fund balance at the close of fiscal year 18, so on June 30th. We are currently projecting, skipping over two columns, that we will have 5,174,958 in the general fund balance at the close of this fiscal year. So we projected we will have a reserve surplus of 2,995,000 above that 3% required operational reserve in fiscal year 18. In fiscal year 19, we're projecting that that fund balance of 5,174 will have been drawn down to 3,162,000 as of June 30th of 2019, continuing to move toward the right. But that would still be 977,000 above the required minimum 3% operational reserve of general fund balance. Okay? So if that's clear to everybody, that's how it works. Hopefully this is a bit more understandable than what's in your budget document. Now, there is separate and apart from the general fund, a separate net revenue stabilization fund or what's called the rainy day fund. It's Fund 11. There is an additional required reserve in that rainy day fund of 3% of general fund expenditures that works out again to be 2,179,000 in this fiscal year. We are projecting that at the end of this fiscal year, moving forward to your right, that fund balance will be at 3,344,000, which exceeds that minimum rainy day fund balance by 1,164,000. By the end of next fiscal year, we're not projecting that we'll appropriate or add any money to that fund balance, so it would close next fiscal year at 3,359,618, which exceeds that minimum required rainy day fund balance by 1,174,000. We have within the rainy day fund ordinance, a targeted rainy day fund balance of 4.5% of general fund expenditures. So that requirement would be 3,269,000 in this current fiscal year. Moving to the right, again, we have a projected fiscal year ending fund balance in the rainy day fund of 3,344,000, which is 75,000 above our targeted reserve level in the rainy day fund. So again, this is good news. Our rainy day fund meets its targeted level and exceeds it by 75,000 as of June 30th by all of our projections, okay? And again, this is reviewed every year when we do the mid-year review as to whether we need to make any deposits to the rainy day fund to meet its minimum or targeted levels. Moving on in the fiscal year 19, that would need to be at 3,359,000 to meet its targeted level. And we are 81,000 above that targeted level by our projections at the end of fiscal year 19. So again, if that's clear to everybody, then, then hopefully a lot of these questions that we've heard over the last years can be better understood. The difference between the 2% emergency allocation and the reserves of fund balance is fund balance versus allocation. What are we targeting for our fund balance? What are we requiring to budget? Okay, 2% emergency reserve is a budget item. It's a line item, just like office supplies or salaries. Yeah, we hope we won't spend it. We hope we won't spend all of our salary budget, but we have to budget for that 2% emergency allocation, okay? And we have to have those minimum reserves in the, uh, general fund and in the rainy day fund, and we hope to exceed them. Any questions about those things or anything that I didn't cover?
Councilmember Castleberry.
I have two questions on that. So is the operational reserve, is that basically our fund balance?
The operational reserve is a required portion of our fund balance.
So what's total fund balance?
The total fund balance is the 5,174 projected at the end of this fiscal.
Right, you're saying we've gotta have 2.9?
No, that, the 2.9 is the difference between what we have.
Oh, sorry, it's, it's 2.1, okay. So, could you talk a little bit, you talked about, we have the 2%, we have, just like we don't plan on spending all our payroll. Could you talk a little bit more about, I don't know, in the budget item, there's a line item, 800,000 employee turnover?
Yes, sir.
Could you talk a little bit about that? I think there's been some concerns that we're going to lay off people, we're cutting people on 800,000 savings. Could you talk a little bit more about how that works in the budget and what it is?
The employer, employee turnover savings assumption is an assumption that we make in the fund summary level in the budget of the, the, the net impact of all of the turnover that happens naturally over the course of a fiscal year. So over the course of a fiscal year, we know that there's going to be some employees who are going to retire, there's gonna be some employees who are gonna be hired to fill those positions, but it's going to take some time to fill those positions. And in that meantime. And in that meantime, the city's general fund or whatever fund is accruing some savings of the budget amount that we thought we'd be paying that position for the full year and the two or three months that it takes to hire the new position in. And usually, the new person that hires in is being paid at a lower level than the more tenured employee that they are replacing. So let's say that the person that retired was making sixty-five thousand and you hire a person at fifty-five thousand, the general fund accrues a savings of ten thousand dollars. All of those things taken together, you'd think you might have a savings of about eight hundred thousand dollars, and that's based on our history. But remember, it is a net, because when that retired person retired, we had to pay out all of their accrued vacation leave and sick leave and everything, so there's a cost. So that eight hundred thousand dollars, it's not an exact science, but that's about one, one and a half percent of our overall salary and benefit budget that we think on a net basis will save over the course of the year.
So I think you asked, answered the question I was gonna ask, because we've had this in here every single year. We always have that in, at that single year. And it's pretty much, it's not based on what you know about the, the last year, the coming year. It's really a percentage, you use one and a half percent.
It's based on our educated guess, based on what we-
That's close to what has happened in the past.
That's been eight hundred thousand dollars for several years, I mean, that's-
As far as what we budget, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so the second page of the handout that you have just shows you, and we might have done this before we, um, did the first part of the discussion, it just shows you what is in the general fund expenditures. And, and the, the main point to take from this is that, to the extent that we are trying to save money in the general fund, keep in mind that the general fund expenditures are driven by salaries and benefits. And those salaries and benefits are concentrated in those large departments that are delivering services directly to the public. Seventy percent of the general fund expenditures are in the public works, police and fire departments. Um, and then as someone mentioned on the next page, um, this shows, um, just from the budget document, a comparison of our per capita employees compared to other cities our size. And as you see there, yes, in fact, we are a very lean and mean governmental operation, a very small governmental operation for a city our size already. And then on the last page is just a quick, um, look at the various, um, things that are being provided, functions in the general fund, and, um, this is at a very high level. Uh, but for example, in the fire department, we, we're providing suppression services and emergency management services. In the planning department, they're providing code compliance and development services. And again, just those sorts of things to, to, to keep in your mind. Um, if you're looking for areas to reduce the budget, you would think in these areas, okay? That, that we want to concentrate our reductions in the street maintenance area, okay? And just understand that those are the sorts of decisions and things that you'll need to be thinking about as we go forward with our strategic financial plan.
Mr. Lewis, do you have any comments?
We just wanna bring us additional information.
Okay.
Cause some of it was mentioned this week to, uh, to myself.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Casper? Any other general budget questions or comments? Okay, then. Yes, yes, thank you.
Just a quick question, do you have a more recent number of where you think we're in this year? As far as, as far as measures?
Not more, not more recent than what we presented in April.
Okay, um, so let's move on to item number two. This is a presentation regarding the University North Card Master Plan and update on project plan elements. This was a request from several council members, um, um, and it was discussed at our last conference committee, I think. And part of the reason that I assume that it was requested was because when we had our initial presentation at the council on the updated master plan, we really, because it was before a council meeting, we really didn't have a chance to ask a lot of questions. So the whole purpose of this is, Mr. Rieger is here to, uh, represent the foundation. Um, we've seen him give many development presentations, so he's used to doing this. And we are going to have, uh, Jeff Gunning, who's the Vice President of Callison RTKL and was, uh, the primary architect on this master planning project, join us, uh, via telephone for, for conference calls so that we can, um, ask him questions as, as they come up. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over. I've heard a lot of questions from council, a lot of questions about green space and walkability and the different kinds of housing. And so I, I'm gonna let you do the presentation. Jeff will be listening and then we can have questions from, from the council.
Very good.
And, oh, and by the way, I'll, I'll mention as, as we start, everybody knows this is going to present, be presented to the Planning Commission tomorrow evening. So there will be a chance for public, I think, input at that time.
Well, thank you very much. And first I just have to, uh, thank Judge Floyd's help us to get, uh, Jeff Gunning on the phone. And Jeff, are you there?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right.
All right, you are with us.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Jeff, for making yourself available tonight. We appreciate it very much, and I think this may be the first I've seen that you're doing this by someone on speaker. We appreciate that very much, that you're able to accommodate that. Jeff was unable to make it up here tonight from Dallas, but, uh, we wanted him to be here, obviously, as the, uh, as the author of this, this study. So, uh, to some extent, I'm gonna be Jeff's pointer here, and I'm gonna take you through, uh, the master plan. You have already seen this though, so I don't wanna belabor us tonight by taking you through the entire thing again. I thought what might be best is to just give you a very quick overview to just refresh you a little bit, and then Jeff can, uh, speak in as well as to any changes he's made since then. So let me just kinda take you through a quick overview. I will not go through every slide, as you saw this again, uh, just recently. But let me, let me go straight to, uh, the master plan development as, as it's in front of us. And so, so Jeff, for your reference, we're looking at the overall map, if you will, the overall graphic of the entire master plan, uh, that you developed. And so, uh, just to sort of orient the council members here, you'll again, remember we're at Rock Creek Road right here. I thirty-five is right across the top. Tecumseh Road is right here, and Twenty-Fourth Avenue comes right down as the Serpentine Road that we used to call it for so many years. The south area of UMP is shown right here to the left, and the north area of UMP that is amidst this discussion right now is this area right here. Entertainment District that has been a part of all of this, if you see the pointer, is this area right to the east of Twenty-Fourth Avenue, between I thirty-five and Twenty-Fourth, to the north of Rock Creek Road, and up to about a midpoint right here. You see Emmy is right here on the south end. Uh, the terror project is right here in the middle. And the rest of this is more or less undeveloped land at this point. The NEDC site is right here and around Emmy at this point. This road is built right through here, call it roundabout right here with a piece of artwork that's in the middle of it. So, uh, this intersection right here, Rock Creek Road and Twenty-Fourth to the northwest is the Entertainment District. You see the arena right here with the big O, the plaza right in front of it, the parking garage right here. Uh, office and light industrial, uh, is in the purple around this area. And then we have the hotel facility at the lower corner of the Entertainment District, and the mixed-use development is, is the buildings in the middle here. So, again, I'm not gonna really belabor the point. I know, Jeff, you have made a couple of, uh, adjustments to this, and I thought it might be good as we're looking at the overall map for you to speak to that, if you will, please.
Okay. Yeah. We, um, we've just continued to look at, uh, at, um, sort of circulation through the project, and so we're still studying, um, access, uh, on and off of I thirty-five. And we're actually waiting for a, um, a, a full report from a traffic engineer that would give us a more concrete advice on how exactly, what exactly would be the best way to do that. So, uh, we, we, uh, have, have modified this a little bit to, to take off something we had assumed might, might be there, but we're not certain we can do that yet. So, uh, we, we didn't wanna presume, uh, that we could, that we could have that exit capacity without knowing it first. So that's really the only thing we've changed since the last time we met. Um, I, I reviewed the other updates, uh, in our, in our last, uh, city council presentation.
Okay, very good. Let me, uh, let me show you a couple of sides. I'm gonna go ahead and move up to the Entertainment District, cause that's been the focus, uh, of our project as we've talked about it. And this is that Entertainment District that you see on the upper left where the arena is. You see the arena is, is labeled number one. So Jeff, I'm on slide number fifteen right now is what we're looking at. And the Entertainment District is, is shown as number one. The Plaza, Events Plaza is number four. Uh, number five is, is the festival streets that come off that Event Plaza. Number two is the hotel, and then number six is, is the mixed-use facility in here. So again, you, you've seen all of this, so I don't wanna take the rest of your time tonight with this as we're an hour into the meeting. But, uh, we, we really anticipate significant advancements of this that, that you'll hear more about tomorrow night. Some of the things I wanted to share that we've, we've been in discussions with you over time here is, is stormwater. And I'm excited to say that we've written in the PUD that there would be significant low-impact development strategies put into this. Uh, we met with staff recently and talked through that as to how we show that in the PUD. And we've written in basically obligations to provide it. It will be difficult for you to show the exact locations until we have the master plan development, I mean, the master developer actually produce the drawings, but we have committed to the specific strategies that would provide those things. Some other things we've committed in the PUD is public Wi-Fi, for instance, to be provided, uh, in the plaza area and along the, the festival streets and at the arena location. That would be a first for our knowledge in the city of Norman to have a public Wi-Fi location. Uh, some of the other things that we've put into the PUD would be, uh, for there to be cart, uh, access that we've, we've, we've discussed with Clark Cart, the ability to have additional stops along Twenty-Fourth Avenue, and they're very receptive to that. So we think that's a, a very positive that we can put into the PUD as well. So we, we've listened to various comments. The PUD is continuing to be developed tomorrow night. It will be presented to the Plan Commission, and we hope that you can listen to those, uh, discussions and, and come and, and hear them. And then, of course, give us additional feedback as we move forward. So I think I'll keep it that short. It was, again, our quest to be here to answer your questions. We're happy to do that, and we're always available to do that as well, so.
I, I have a, a couple of questions I'm gonna ask about how the arena is situated. But before I forget about it, I know in addition to the cart, one of the things that's been brought up is bike share, bike sharing stations at that location. And another thing that was brought up in terms of transportation, if there was a station there that charged electric vehicles, that's something else that had, was brought to my attention, um, which I had not thought about. And then the issue about, uh, land for the possibility of an elementary school. Um, I know that, uh, Dr. Nick has, has brought that up several times. We were talking about so many new houses, would that be a possibility? Um, that, to have some land dedicated for a school?
Yes, let me, I wrote all those down.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm trying to say them because I tend, as we, I, I try to listen to the council members, and then sometimes I forget what I wanted to say until I've left, and it's two hours later. The, why was the, this is for Jeff's question. Why was it decided to orient the arena like it is and where it is? What, what were some of the considerations? I think I've heard a partial answer to that, but-
Yeah, um, we actually had it rotated ninety degrees, uh, from where it is now. And in consulting with, uh, a, a group called Crawford Architects that we work with sometimes on sports projects, cause they specialize in stadiums and arenas and so forth, they suggested this rotation because we can actually tuck the service area for the, uh, for the arena, which is a necessary thing, but something you'd like to screen. We can tuck it between the arena and the parking structure this way. And so that white zone that you see between the O and the parking structure, that's, that is, um, that is the, the service area. And then what you see just at the bottom of that area is a bridge that would come across from the deck into upper levels of the, uh, of the arena. So we can kind of screen views down into that service area. So it was really just a way to make sure that the, the facades that you see on the arena are attractive, and you see openings into the building and glass and so forth. And, and just, you know, functionally, we could, we could hide that service area and the trucks that are just kind of a, a reality that you have to deal with.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Holman?
So I understand what you're saying there, trying to hide that area, but do you think that having a connection from the parking structure directly to the arena will deter people from going to the Entertainment District if they can go directly to their car or directly to their seat?
You know, it was really something that, um, our, our collaborating architects who specialize in these sorts of things thought, thought it would be a, an efficient way to get people in and out of the arena, uh, efficiently. Now, there will be at least half of the people would be coming, more than half of the people would be coming in, uh, at grade. So I think you'll have, you'll have plenty of people walking, uh, at, at grade. And as, as master planners, we're always in favor of keeping people on, on the street and, and, uh, of trying to avoid having them in, uh, in elevated, uh, bridges and things like that, especially in urban areas. But in this case, just for the, uh, efficient flow of, uh, visitors in and out of a, of a big arena like this, you, you wanna sort of get people in as quickly as you can and out as quickly as you can, uh, we felt like the bridge was a good idea. That's all still really in study though. I, I wouldn't say that that's carved in stone, but that's been the thinking that led us to this point.
Okay, and as far as the PUD goes, do we know what the facades of these buildings would look like? Is it exactly what we see in the concept drawings? Specifically, the parking garage and how visible it would be from the interstate? What would people be looking at? How would the arena look like from the interstate? Another issue too is along Twenty-Fourth Avenue is where a lot of the parking is and what the back of the Entertainment District buildings will be facing. So, you know, four-sided architecture and, uh, basically how this is gonna look for my, for I thirty-five and from Twenty-Fourth Avenue. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, no, all very good questions and things that we, that we grapple with all the time. Um, the, the material palette for the project, I think, is, is something that will be developed as a master developer comes, comes on board. Uh, typically, we like to write design guidelines for a project like this to where there's a kind of a material palette that everything doesn't have to look the same, but there are materials that look good together. Uh, and that could extend to, uh, some of the multifamily residential, uh, e- even some of the office and things like that and other parts of the master plan. So that's all still open, uh, and, and, uh, you know, would be developed further down the road, I think. Um, and, and of course, we want the I thirty-five to be, to be attractive. And so the, the guidelines would, would, uh, mandate that particularly the parking, uh, structure facade that faces I thirty-five, that probably wants to be, um, uh, screened and, and landscaped so that it is something that is, uh, you know, an attractive sort of front door to the project from everyone who, who drives by. That said, we want all four sides of that parking structure to be attractive. So, uh, we'll have some guidelines on what the spandrels can be made of and a certain amount of landscaping up against it. Uh, so that's, those are great questions, and, and we wanna make sure we, we deal with that. Your last question, on the back of the retail buildings, yes, that is, uh, that is an issue that we, that we need to deal with on all these kinds of projects. It's a matter of effectively screening service areas again. So, uh, where, where trucks need to pull up to do loading and unloading, uh, they pull up behind a, a wall that's landscaped. And we like to make sure that the materials on the back of those buildings are, are the same palette of materials that are on the front. Um, so, yeah, you don't see merchandise, uh, as much, and you do see some screened service areas, but they have to be thoughtfully considered because, you know, it, it, it's essentially the first impression when somebody drives into the parking structure.
Right, and with a lot of Twenty-Fourth Avenue already being mostly lined with parking lots, um, you know, all the trees and landscaping looks really good in the pictures, but we all know that takes years for those to, uh, fully mature and really block out some of that stuff. So from my perspective, that's very important. So thank you very much for answering those questions.
Sure.
Let me add one other thing as to design guidelines, Jeff, uh, something that, I think design guidelines are gonna be something we're gonna have to develop for several aspects of this project. Another one is signage, for instance, uh, this, this particular area. And Jeff, you might talk about it, but this particular area has a signage vision for the, the plaza and the festival streets. That's, that's different than we have, and so we're gonna have to have design guidelines that are gonna have to address that.
Yeah, we, uh, we, on a sports project, you, you have opportunities to do, uh- Yeah, we, uh, we, on a sports project, you, you have opportunities to do signage for the, for the building and, and, uh, even the rendering show these kind of electronic banners that, uh, that can show, uh, OU logos or City of Norman or Norman High School or, or NCAA or whatever that happens to be. So, we've, we've already provided some information to those writing the PUD on our experience with similar sorts of sports projects where that's done in a tasteful way and, uh, and it can be dialed up on game nights and, and, of course, dialed down on, on just, uh, an everyday, uh, you know, a Wednesday morning or Wednesday night.
And we've included some of that in the PUD at this point with, to give you a heads up of what that would be, and then to say that it would be design review guidelines that would be put forth into the, into the detail of it.
Councilmember Wilson?
I've got multiple questions. One is, um, I'm having a hard time seeing, but I'm, so I'm curious as to how, uh, how is this venue going to compete with their area venues like the Chesapeake and the Riverwind and, and you get smaller, the, the Zoo Amphitheater? And, I mean, what's gonna make this that much more special? And how dependent is the traffic flow going to be on this situation at Tecumseh, uh, through the Southwest Wire land area? Kind of two separate weird questions.
It is. I appreciate them both. There's been a lot of discussions, uh, in the meetings we've been in on this about the size of the arena, being about a ten thousand-seat arena. And Jeff chiming in here, but, uh, uh, they envision that as sort of a, a target niche that would hit a, a, a type of seating that, that is in the middle of the market that is not addressed right now. Uh, certainly, the Chesapeake is bigger. Uh, the Riverwind Casino's been mentioned as a smaller venue, but there's nothing out there really in the ten thousand-seat range. It, it's been also significant discussions as to what happens to the Cox, uh, arena, if you will, with the Cox Convention Center. It's very likely, we believe, that that probably is, is put out of use after Oklahoma City finishes its new convention center. So I think there's a, there's an opportunity there to, to basically have events flow to Norman that would otherwise have gone to that facility. Jeff, you might elaborate on the size a little bit from the sports perspective.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the, the size of the arena is, uh, is smaller than what, uh, most universities have built in the past. It's only ten thousand seats and, um, uh, and, and that's because it, they can fill it for basketball games. It's the right size for a lot of concert venues. Um, and so that's all been, that's all been planned with the advice of, uh, of, of people who sort of understand arena design today, as well as, uh, what the OU Athletic Department has learned would be the best, uh, venue for them to utilize. Um, but if you remember the last meeting we were in, uh, the group CSL came and talked about their findings on the arena and the number of event nights per year that they could, uh, anticipate. And so they did all of that, looking at this arena in, uh, this market with the other venues that exist, uh, in Oklahoma City and, and other, other parts of the state. So, they took all that into account, and they're, and they're looking at, uh, what, what's the chances for success of this. And so, um, came away with a, a positive impression of those chances.
Councilmember, I didn't write down your second question. What was the second question?
Um, how dependent is our traffic flow and, and being able to accommodate this appropriately-sized crowd, um, on, with our, uh, on-ramp, off-ramp situation at Tecumseh Road?
Yeah.
Southwest Wire?
Southwest Wire, I don't think is...
Yeah, there's been...
Having as much fun with this as everybody else is.
A lot of discussions continue on that. I was in a meeting today in Oklahoma City with, uh, Director of Transportation and former Director Gary Ridley, and there's continued discussions on, uh, the I-35 corridor study and how we mold into that. So, uh, I think there are many options, and we've seen many different options as to access over Twenty-Fourth, onto Rock Creek Road, possible interchange issues there, possible connections to the Tecumseh interchange. I don't think we have that finalized yet. But that's gonna take significant engineering, and, and we need to get to that point. I think we're not at that point to expend the, the resources and, and, uh, time needed to really explore the details of that. What we're trying to figure out is, can we get the PUD and can we get the public-private partnership in place?
Well, I think as a council, we would actually want to know before we approved a project of this size and this kind of, we already have a traffic situation, in my opinion, over there. If before we were to even talk, I know we're not even talking about financing or anything. Today, we're talking about the viability of this project, and I'm seeing a barrier, in my opinion, that this access is, is, you have to have it. You have, am I wrong?
We have to have significant traffic.
So I would hate to get the cart before the horse, is what I'm saying.
Well, actually, what we've done in the past, for instance, on Destined Landing, is, is similar process, where you have a big enough project that we have to figure out, do, do we have a project yet? And then, as we say, in this PUD repeatedly, we don't have foremotion on this project until we do a full traffic impact analysis. So, and the PUD states it repeatedly that at such time that we bring plumeri plats would be the engineering time. When you bring a plumeri plat, that's when you have the engineers look into the details of it. We have to do an updated TIA study, uh, at that time for everything. And so that would be the moment that the engineers basically figure it all out. And so, we understand fully. We don't have foremotion on the project until we have that resolved.
Well, I guess I, I have additional questions on this. Does ODOT, is there gonna, are they a yes or no? Are they going to be a, um, so I'm looking at past projects, and Brandon is something that, you know, on my word, that I'm like, we have developments happening and happening, and we're bound up by, uh, the ODOT and getting the lights and the things that we need down there. So I would be concerned about this same thing kind of happening. We build up in a way that we create a traffic situation for ourselves.
Well, and again, we, we wouldn't create the traffic problem or an issue because we couldn't unless we had the engineering solution in place and ready to go.
Uh, we have, so.
So.
We do.
We couldn't build it until we figure out the traffic solution.
Okay. Um, I have other questions, but I'll, to other people.
Does anybody else have any que-? I do wanna just kind of make a, a statement about, since Southwestern Wire was mentioned. Um, they have been great partners in talking with us, and they know that we have this issue. They just wanna make sure that it's clear that there's nothing been decided and that there's many, many things that need to be settled. Um, but, but they've been really so good to work with us and, and have been helpful. But they've got their issues and we've got our issues, so we can't, and I, and I think that's kind of been said. We don't know for sure that that's where something can go, and that's why it's been, it's been pulled out. So, um, yes, Councilmember Holman?
What else for this area was looked at as far as what else could be done with this land besides this project?
I would refer to Jeff. Jeff, do you wanna comment on that, the master plan studies?
Uh, yeah, we, we looked at various combinations of residential, office, um, continuing some of the office, like the ME project that's there. Um, you know, we, we, we looked at, at restaurants. There's already really a lot of retail. Um, and so, we really kept sort of running into what is, what is something that could really be a catalyst for this project? And it really wasn't until the, uh, the arena idea came along that everybody felt like, well, that could be the, the linchpin to really creating a, a level of success and a, a regional attraction that, that could make all the rest of it work. So, um, we, we did look at other things, but we frankly weren't certain that they could work in, in, uh, in, in a, in a short period of time, maybe not even a long period of time, without that. And so, you know, in, in the, in the last city council meeting, I was talking about the kind of synergy between, uh, the entertainment district, a- additional office space, the multifamily, the new urbanist community. Each one of those, uh, is supported by the other. And so, that's what a successful mixed-use project does. So we really think you get more office, uh, i- if you build the entertainment district, uh, the new urbanist community will be more successful, uh, multifamily will be more successful. So, that, that's really, it, it, it was not hanging together very well as, as mixed uses that could support one another until the, uh, the arena idea began to be the thing that could really be the catalyst for all the rest.
And did you guys look at Lloyd Noble Center in any depth? And what is deficient about Lloyd Noble Center? And what would this arena do that Lloyd Noble Center can't do and can't be renovated or remodeled into doing?
Well, and that's, yeah, that's very important. I mean, um, Lloyd Noble Center doesn't have, uh, two mi- miles of frontage on, on a, you know, one of the biggest highways in the country. I mean, it's a, it's just not as well-located to attract the restaurants and the, and the, and the residential, the office. It's, um, it's an on-campus facility, but the, the real attraction here was, how do we make this some, someplace where we get more fans, concerts, more types of events that an on-campus facility would just never get because of, of proximity and, and, you know, ease of, of getting to them from other parts of the state?
Thank you.
Councilmember Cardjola. Um, so I've been asked by several of my constituents, and I figure it's best to just come straight to, to you guys, um, who will own and operate the arena?
It would be private ownership, most likely a 501(c)(3) of some kind. It would be, uh, we believe governance, inclusion of the city, uh, OU, the foundation. We don't have that ironed out yet in detail, but we believe that would be the situation of private ownership of a 501(c)(3).
And who operates it, then?
Of, you're asking the arena itself? That would be that entity. So it would be probably governance from within that 501(c)(3). The city of Norman would have input, uh, OU and OU Foundation would have input, as well as the master developer.
Councilmember Clark?
How are we gonna outline the level of input of all of these partners? One thing I would like to see, if it's a true partnership, is that Norman Public Schools and More Norman Technology Center don't have to pay for graduation ceremonies anymore. I think that's ridiculous. Uh, all city choir, all city orchestra, all that fun stuff. That's what I need for a community partnership in a facility like this. So, I mean, if I, if that, if I hadn't said that here, and let's fast forward, and, and if this is built and if this is created, and then the city of Norman came and said, I, I don't think that Norman Public Schools should have to pay for it, what is the level of our input and how much control do we have?
Yeah, it is still to be determined completely, but we have talked to Dr. Miglerino repeatedly about this project. I think he's excited about it. I think there's significant, uh, upside for the school system here. Yes, that's the intention, is that they would be using the facility. I wanna add one other thing that the mayor talked about, too, is, is an elementary school site. Something that came up just recently was, uh, Dr. Miglerino said the population, as you could see on the larger drawing of the, of the residential, is pretty significant. This would be a significant area of population. And it was asked of us, would we provide an elementary school site? And the answer was yes. And I believe that's, uh, already in process to be drafted in. So we would provide an elementary school site at this location for a new elementary school building. I've heard actually quite a bit of excitement about that because of, we all know that the Western, uh, elementary schools of Truman and Roosevelt are busting at the seams right now. It possibly, you could possibly imagine that this takes some pressure off of those schools as well with a new site here. And there was even some excitement I heard in a meeting of, of what would a new elementary school look like in this kind of an urban setting with large multifamily around? It could be pretty exciting. It could be sort of, uh, an urban concept of elementary school, so.
Okay, I think Stephen had his hand up, and then...
Yeah, I have a follow-up on that.
Follow-up, Stephen.
I think the, the elementary site sounds great. I like the pictures of the proposed housing. I visited Dallas, can't remember which part, because there's so many parts of Dallas, but it looked a lot like that. And the energy to have your homes right up to the sidewalk and go brunch and shop was wonderful, and I would love to have that in Norman. But I'm concerned about the traffic, not just what you pointed out, but I've also had residents reach out to me of the whole Flood and Tecumseh. And so I reached out to Mr. O'Leary, uh, because I, we had approved an engineering design contract with Garvin. Uh, Sean, could you, so I don't have to read your email, could you kind of?
Sure. Happy to speak, Councilmember. Um, yeah, just talking about a project that was actually identified in the original University North Park, um, traffic and transportation improvements for improving the inters- well, the section of Tecumseh from Twenty-Fourth to Flood Street, so both intersections, essentially adding lots of lanes. Uh, if you, if you drive that frequently, you know that that has become one of our most congested and high-axle locations. So, we need to add capacity, uh, lots of lanes, lots of turn lanes to all those intersections. Uh, council approved an engineering contract about a year ago with a firm called Garber Engineering from Norman. And we are nearly complete on the concept design for what is looking like about a seven million dollar project to improve that, that area, both, again, Tecumseh, Twenty-Fourth, and Flood, including a connection of Twenty-Fourth back to Flood north of, uh, that location. So, very significant project. This is not your average transportation improvement. Difficult to build because we're building it under traffic conditions. Uh, we are building part of the state highway. Tecumseh is a state highway, and Flood north of Tecumseh is a state highway. So it's a partnership between the city and the VOT. And, uh, to that extent, we've actually included this project in our applications last year for ACOG funding. I think the project could be eligible for up to five million dollars in federal transportation funds because it is such a problem now, already. Traffic is already a problem there. And as I said to the council member in the email, imagine the full build-out of University North Park with or without an entertainment district. Imagine how much additional traffic we'll be managing there. So we need to make this improvement, whether the arena project is built or not. Uh, but if the arena project i- is part of the planning process, we need to incorporate that into our design, uh, concepts, which we haven't done yet because it hasn't been approved. So, it's a good example of sort of a chicken-and-egg situation. So we need to design all kinds of traffic and transportation. First, we appreciate the question. We are concerned as your transportation department. ODOT is concerned as the state transportation department that we need to do lots of improvements out there with or without the entertainment district. There's lots to do. Part of the challenge of University North Park is there's two ways in and two ways out. Robinson and Tecumseh. The Robinson interchange and the Tecumseh interchange are the only real ways to manage traffic in and out of that area. And both of those interchanges need lots of improvements. It's not just about the access roads to Tecumseh Wire. There's lots more improvements to come. And in the next few months, we hope to keep bringing that back to council, a joint project that we, the city of Norman, City Moore, and ODOT have been doing, to look at all of the interchanges through this corridor in Norman and then eight miles into the city of Moore.
And you mentioned that we could get possibly five million, uh, from ACOG with the project exceeding seven million, uh, if there was some sort of TIF that could be factored into that. So, that's how we would pay for that infrastructure improvement.
There's already TIF funds allocated to this project in the original University North Park, TIF number one.
And it was the school that made me, I mean, I was, I was on my list to bring up anyways, but I'm trying to picture, you know, how Kyle and I, Councilor Allison and I, keep dealing with High Meadows on Twelfth?
Yeah.
Imagine that times like a million, is what I'm picturing with schools and drop-off. So if we're gonna put a school there, we really need to figure out the traffic situation.
If I could say, Jeff, you might interject on some ideas of the school site and, and how that would integrate into a development like this.
Yeah, sure. Well, if you go, Sean, to page, um, eleven?
Yeah.
Uh, which shows the whole north half. Um,
Yeah.
Yeah, I think on the school site, we have a lot of flexibility because, uh, the new urbanist community is really sized, uh, on that piece of land, but also leaving a lot of green space, um, on the road that comes, just straight in from I-35 or from the I-35 frontage road. And then there's another green space where the, where the road kind of does a bend around it. That tech office along the whole right side of the plan, the north side of the plan, is, is really just, you know, that, that, we don't have to have that specific number of, uh, tech office sites in order to make this thing work. So, um, you really could think about, uh, the, the land just above that green park, uh, over on the north side of the plan, uh, where the, it's currently part of the new urbanist community. But that sort of, uh, curved block there, uh, might be an interesting school site, and, and they would look out on the green, or maybe the green is part of their playground area. Uh, and it's highly visible. You want it to be safe and, and walkable from other, other residential and so forth. I don't think you want it necessarily close to the arena or the commercial over there. Um, and it's right on, on Twenty-Fourth, which is a, a high-capacity road already. Yes, you have to make sure you, you accommodate the school drop-off and pick-up times and, and so forth, and getting people on and off the property. But that's my first guess as to where you might begin to look, uh, for a school site. But like I said, we have a lot of flexibility on where that could go.
Okay, I think I've got three people in the queue and maybe a fourth, uh, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Castleberry, Councilmember Cardjola, and then I think that's where we are. Okay.
I would just say, you know, probably being real cautious about, we talk about adding lanes. You know, Twenty-Fourth Avenue is already four lanes. If we add another, you know, if we add one on each side, we got six lanes. You know, at some point, it makes it real difficult for pedestrians to start crossing streets like that. And more often than not, you, we really just end up inducing more traffic. Uh, you know, we can never add enough lanes. Um, look at many cities that have ten-lane highways that are bumper-to-bumper, stacked for an hour in the afternoon. So it doesn't, you know, that's a real concern that I have about addressing traffic is just saying we're gonna add more lanes, which is real expensive and may not really solve the problem or not for very long. Um, another concern, though, too, is, uh, with the topic of the cost of using the arena came up. is, the topic of the cost of using the arena came up. So if we were to say, these groups can use it for free, well, you know, what if OU says, "Well, we want to use it for free, too, because of this reason"? Or, "We have budget issues, and, you know, we're going to have to play next season at Lloyd Noble Center. We can't afford the rent at this new arena up there anymore, because, you know, whatever happens in a few years", or something like that. So what would the agreement look like of these entities and their use of this facility, and what it would cost? And, you know, I understand, I understand there being a cost to use it. I know, you know, in city departments, certain city departments that do work for other city departments get, you know, money from those, where there's allocated funds to those departments for those services. So that makes sense to me. But how would that agreement look? And what would the, you know, what would the rules be? What would the, how well would we be able to hold people to, or these entities to these timetables, stuff like that?
Well, first, I think a lot of those details would probably be put into a development agreement at some point later on, as we're up to five development agreements now.
Seven.
Seven, I apologize. Seven development agreements now on the south side. So I think a lot of that would be ironed out in development agreements as to the TIF aspects. I could tell you, between the new co-owner and OU basketball program, there would absolutely be an anchor tenant lease agreement that would firmly require them to play basketball in this facility for an extended period of time, and we're talking decades. So this project doesn't get built without that. So we would absolutely have that in place to go forward.
Still, we've had clawback, or issues with clawbacks, and getting what we need, you know, in some of those agreements before. And, you know, I'd have some heartburn about coming across those same circumstances again, you know.
Sean, I think on the, on the, on the basketball agreement, I mean, it's got to be a long-term agreement based on the financing of the project. I mean, the banks are going to want to see, the banks want to see a multiple-year lease in order to finance the project. So that one's going to be pretty set in stone. The other ones, I guess, could be a part of the development agreement.
Yeah, I was going to mention, we have worked in collaboration with our public works department on the traffic issue. We've had lots of discussions with Mr. Wyden with Southwest Wire. And as Emily is drafting the project plan, which should come to you in draft form in a week or so, we are writing in the things that you mentioned. The two-acre school site will be in there. And the project plan will be the structure document that sets the structure. So it will have those points in there about access from Norman Public Schools for some of these key major annual events at no cost. So that will be in that structure document. But the actual detail will actually come forward later in a development agreement. But as much as we can plug in some of those things in the structure document, that's what Emily is endeavoring to do. Didn't mean to jump in and talk for you, but that, you know, you might want to...
How much of this would we know before we were asked, before this body's asked to make a final decision allowing this and the public financing?
We hope to try to get this project plan drafted in your hands hopefully by the end of the week, maybe certainly by next week.
The important, I think the important component to the specifics that you're addressing would absolutely be in the development agreement. Of course, the approval of a project plan does not obligate the expenditure of any funds. It sets in place the allocations that could be made if certain things are, if certain things are done by certain times. So what we would endeavor to do, should a project plan amendment be adopted, is then negotiate a development agreement, a conditional development agreement. And by that, I mean, we would obligate a master developer when one, the reason we can't do these things now is because there isn't a master developer. But when one is chosen, it would be to put in place what the city would, and the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority would obligate that developer to do. And if the developer does A, B, and C, then the authority would authorize assistance in development financing at a set amount, which we'll talk about in some detail another time. Now, the issuance of that would not occur until the master developer goes and gets all the other financing that has to happen in order to make the project work. You know, they need a lot more money than just the amount of assistance that might be provided by the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority. So with the authorization that's made in the project plan, the master developer would then try to go get all the other money that it needs through private equity and, you know, other bank financing, and, you know, all the things that they would need to build the entertainment district, the arena, and the parking garage. And the authorization of the issuance, the issuance itself would not take place until the developer has all of its other financing in place. That would be a simultaneous closing. We would not, we would not authorize the issuance of any assistance in development financing until they have the final financing to close simultaneously. And by that, I mean, you know, they let the contractors the exact same day. I mean, it all has to be wrapped up before the city or the authority would authorize the expenditure of a penny. So that's where those details come in place. And that conditional development agreement would say, you have to go get your financing, you have to spend at least X amount of money, you have to invest a private amount of X, you have to build an entertainment district, you have to build an arena, you have to build a parking garage, you have to build plazas, you have to build streets, you have to build access, you have to do...
The way that we say so?
Yes, in the development agreement.
Yes.
Outlined in the development.
Yes, we could, yes. The development agreement has no parameters. We could obligate them. I mean, it's a negotiation, you know, I mean, there will be push and pull. But that's where the city would really want to lay down what, what happens. You know, the Norman Public Schools gets X days for free to use the arena. You know, I, you know, I think there's a series of things that we would want to tick off there, that the developer would be obligated to do in order to receive the assistance in development financing. And, you know, that's where, when we sign on that line, then we ship the developer out, and he waves it around as collateral and says, "Look, if, bank, if I do all these things, then I, you know, I get X amount in public financing from the city of Norman. Help me do this thing." And again, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to issue that amount unless and until the master developer does all those things.
Would we have to approve that amount first?
Yes. So the project plan lays out that amount. That's what the project plan does. The project plan says, you'll get this in assistance in development financing if you go do these things. And then, you know, the development agreement lays out all the details in the sketch. And again, and then there's another time lag until they're ready to get out there and dig.
So the master developer goes out, does those things, and then comes back to the city council and says, "I've done these things. Now, can I have this money?"
Now authorize, yes.
The council could still say no at that point.
No. So if they've done all of the things, then yes, they're contractually obligated. It's the quid pro quo. They did that so that you do this.
You also have the PUD document. There's another document that controls a lot of issues.
Okay. And I just want to make one comment about their, this, and it may sound oversimplistic, but I've read a number of things like in, on social media, this discussion about $90 million of city money, or 102, or 116, whichever one of the documents that it was in, depending on whether you're talking about TIF 2, and TIF 4, and TIF 5, or however many. But it is not that we have $90 million for an arena that we're giving to the development. If this agreement is done, there's no money unless the development itself produce, oh, I think with some people, they think that we're spending $90 million, or 102 million, or something of city money, and why don't we spend it on something else? And the important part, the reason that you would consider doing anything like this, is because we believe that it can produce this much money and more money for the city. That's the reason the city looks at it. So...
Thank you, Mayor. That's a really important distinction. Let me just make one point on that. It's only the incremental revenue, this is exactly what you've just said, it's only the incremental revenues that are pledged to pay that assistance in development financing. No money from the general revenue fund is pledged. So if this development doesn't occur, then the incremental revenue, you know, by definition, incremental revenues are the new revenues generated by the project itself. So if this development does not occur, the incremental revenues are not generated, thus those incremental revenues do not exist in order to be pledged to pay the, to pay the debt, even if the debt is authorized.
And so if the arena's not doing well, and that's not really our deal, probably.
Well, the key thing there is, we will not authorize the issuance until we know that the contractor is ready to dig, put shovels in the dirt. And now a bank is not going to authorize the enormous amount of private financing that's necessary for the arena, unless they know the developer's going to get out there and dig in the dirt. So that's where, it's the, it's, it's all those things happening at the same time. We're not going to put, ask the city to go out there on a limb until all the rest of the development is ready.
And banks don't like to take risks either. So they're going to have to be pretty sure that the development plan is going to be successful before they're going to allow any of their money.
Okay. Now, I've still got people that have been waiting, and I'm going to start here with Councilmember Castleberry and go down the line.
I got some other questions. I want to just address this one issue you talked about here. Emily, so we're six, seven years into the project, and we've already put, I'm at there, we've financed it, and we're using the increment to pay back the debt. Developer filed bankruptcy, walks away from the deal, we have another recession, 2009 happens, what's the city's liability on that debt?
Only incremental revenue that's generated.
So there's no incremental revenue generated. The whole thing just shuts down. The city general fund is under no obligation to pay that money back.
The city is under no, the city's general fund is under no obligation to pay that back. There will still be revenues generated, presumably, you know, on the south half of the project. And so if incremental revenues are generated, those are what have been pledged to pay, to pay down that debt, and those are all that have to be paid.
So the banker, or the bond, whoever finances us, is taking the risk that this doesn't, that these increments are generated.
That's to Jeff's point, that a bank is not going to take...
That's my thing. They're taking the risk. So these projections we have, they're the ones that are going to rely on those projections. If they don't happen, they're the ones that are at risk. I just want to make it clear that the city, the general fund, will never be impacted by this being a total failure.
That's correct. Only incremental revenues will be pledged in this debt. That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make that, I guess, other questions on the other.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Cardula?
I don't remember what my question was now.
I've been writing mine down. I've been writing mine down.
All right. Did you, do you have it? Councilmember Wilson, your question?
I got a bunch of them, so I'm just going to use up one more time. Okay, I would like to say that it is valid for us to ask what other projects could be treated in this manner. I think that some social media chatter has been, and myself, I've actually put it out there, like, what can we spend $102 million on? It is important that we talk about this. It is important that we not just, you know, date the first guy that comes along.
I would say Mary, but okay.
Or Mary, you know. Pretty specific. But anyway, so I just want to say, that's the reason why the conversations are happening. I think they should happen. I have a question about, I guess, I wasn't sure that tonight we were going to actually talk about the financing and the, that sort of thing, but let me ask, and I feel like it was in some of the documents, but I want to ask you since you're here. Emily, the impact of the moved sales tax from Lloyd Noble? So if we move Lloyd Noble, or the activities in Lloyd Noble to a new venue, then we capture that sales tax now that we don't currently capture? And is that, what dollar amount does that look like?
So I believe the city does capture sales tax from Lloyd Noble?
We do, currently.
Like the sales of hot dogs and cokes and stuff?
But not the entry fee? Would that change? Is that a big deal? I don't know.
I don't think so, but I'm not sure.
I don't know. No, I mean, like, okay, Anthony says we do get ticket sales.
We do get ticket sales currently. Okay.
Ticket sales aren't taxed. Ticket sales aren't taxed, so you're not getting anything right now?
Yeah, I thought they were...
Now, if the city wanted to create a, the city, tickets aren't taxed to sporting events.
Oh, city, but they are...
State, the state now has a tax on large sporting events, the Thunder instead of that. The Thunder, yeah, but it...
So that's what I was curious about. And then also the Advalorm piece of it.
So that's really where the difference is, because currently, you know, there's no Advalorm generator on Lloyd Noble. Under this arrangement, we would obligate the owner of the arena to pay...
And they're a nonprofit, so does that affect that?
They would be obligated because, by virtue of being in an increment district, to pay a certain amount of property taxes. And all of our projections obligated at 50% of construction costs, which is reasonable and consistent with market on that.
Okay.
So that would be true for both the arena and the parking garage. And then...
Do they pay property taxes?
What was that? Oh, that's a great question.
The school is, it's built there, pay property taxes?
Yes.
They would pay property taxes?
Doesn't matter.
Everything.
Who owns the property? Anybody that operates in that area pays fee and lieu.
Okay. So my next question is, back to the, this is kind of a silly, minor one, but the, the cost of using the, when the schools do graduations, what is, what is that cost? I have no idea. I'm curious.
$20,000.
$20,000? 20, 20 grand at a time?
No, I think for a year.
For a year, to use it? Okay. Now, I've scribbled out several questions, and I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Castleberry?
Okay, I'll go back to my two other questions. So when you say that there's going to be land here to develop, don't, how is this land, is this land donated for the elementary school? Are we selling it?
I believe that would be the case. It would be donated.
So instead of, so right now, if we don't develop this or whatever, they're still looking at, or develop some own type of stuff. They're looking at putting another elementary school somewhere, so the Norman Public Schools is going to have to go buy some land to do this. In this case, we're helping them get the land for free.
Yeah, I don't know what Dr. Miglerino is...
Okay, I understand, but there's...
He teaches otherwise, but...
So my question is, so explain to me how a 501(c)(3) a nonprofit organization has private owners?
I'll have to check. I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, he says it's going to be privately owned. It's going to be a 501(c)(3).
They're a private, they're a private not-for-profit.
I got, I just want to do, I, I know the answer. I wanted you guys to give, sorry, answer publicly on how that works.
I, I think it would be no problem, you know, from a taxation or operation standpoint for a private not-for-profit to own and operate the arena and the parking garage.
But can you just talk about the ownership structure? How does Robert Castleberry own stock in a 501(c)(3) as a private owner? Or anybody? I mean, I got ownership.
I don't think it'd be ownership. It'd be governance, I think, is what we talked about. Several governance input into that.
There's a difference between governance and ownership.
Correct.
NUCO is owned by somebody, somebody wrote the check to open the checking account.
Right.
Can you talk about how that works?
Well, and again, we haven't gotten to that level yet. We got to work with it in master developer. Once he comes on board, that's very soon, I think, within a matter of weeks. And then that discussion will play out there, I think, more importantly, anywhere. I think the vision, though, has been mutual governance, so that we have governance from the city of Norman and input into the, into the operation of the arena. But I think it's been important that the city didn't want to own this arena, and that they didn't want to be in the business of actually managing it and running it.
Okay, so I mean, I think one of the questions from the public is, who is this private owner? As part of the government's part of it, can we require the disclosure who this private owner is, or is it going to be ABC LLC, NUCO LLC? I mean, I think the public wants to know that it is Mike Smith, Jeff Jones, Billy Bob Thornton, whoever it is. They want to know their names.
But I understand, I understand. And I think there would be, there would be provisions for that.
Okay. Were there other, I thought there were some other questions about traffic for, were there?
I had one more question about traffic.
Okay.
I'm, I'm concerned, I guess, and I think this is going, you're going to say, once we have a master developer and we have all these things, but I'm worried about the impact of what Mr. O'Leary was talking about when we redo Tecumseh and all of that stuff. Are we timing that? You know, that seems like, I mean, we, just looking back on Lindsay and how painful that was, and to all those businesses, are we going to, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot with a traffic major, "Oh, we're about to open", I know that they're not going to do something not well thought out, but I have concerns about a major additions of lanes and on-ramps and timing and the impact. I don't know if it's a question or just a statement.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think there's been some interesting discussions on traffic in one respect that, that I think is sort of counterintuitive, that you're going to open a 10,000-seat arena, and that suddenly you're going to have a traffic problem. Actually, in the meetings I've been in, the arena is, is not necessarily the issue, because it would probably be off-peak times, that it is, it is coming and going. It would be in the evenings and in the weekends. The traffic issues, more importantly, are the peak times, the AM and the PM rush hour period. So actually, the means I've heard is that this is probably not necessarily an arena problem, but as Mr. O'Leary said, a problem elsewhere of the growing area of the development. So I would, again... So I would, again, go back to, as you said, though, we have to do an update of TIA when we do the preliminary plat, which is next, after all of this. But that takes pretty significant resources and input, and so that's not been done yet and won't be done until we figure out if we can do the TIF, if we can do the PUD, because we're not going to get the master developer to even come on board to show us the details until they know they have a PUD that allows them to do it, and that they know that they have a TIF that allows them to do it. We can't even get to that second point until we have that. And so, but that would be a very important part of the second point, is to determine the traffic and the impact of the traffic, because then that gets into significant financial considerations within the TIF and otherwise. So it's a fundamental piece. Please understand, I'm not trying to say it isn't. It's just it's a timing and sequence issue more than anything as to when we address it.
Let's come back to Councilmember Castleberry and then Councilmember Clark.
So I missed the first presentation because I had a, wait, you say, I heard go Clark. Did I hear wrong?
It's, it's all right. He's being a gentleman here.
Thank you, sir. My apologies. So I'll continue on in my interrupting. I missed the first presentation because of my, my kid's fifth grade celebration, but I was reading over the vision, and I'm sure this is a master developer point too, but I love the attract unique local restaurants and envision for national dining entertainment. I think people are so burned by what happened with the south part, whether we had control over that or not. I think people are scared to commit to this big dream when it didn't work out the first time. And I think we want it to work out this time. I know I do. I'd love to go to a place in Norman and spend my tax dollars on a fancy date night. You know, campus corner, I'm way too old for that. Main Street definitely has its, what?
Logies.
Logies, there we go. You know, Benvenuti, stuff like, we've got some legends on Lindsay. We've got some great places, but I would love something more, but again, what's the assurance that we're not going to get, you know, North Parked again?
Oh, no, it's a verb.
That's been, especially first, I'm going to ask Jeff to comment, if you will, and I'll, I'll comment on the location. But Jeff, if you would comment on what we've talked about and how cities have different districts and different ideas and visions within each district, this being sort of the town and downtown being the plaza, but discuss that a little bit, if you would, Jeff.
Yeah, well, you know, the, the arena is really, as I said, it's, it's something that is a catalyst for a lot of the success factors on this project. And I think those event nights, a certain number of event nights a year, bringing people there for different reasons, for events and concerts and so forth, that's what is going to generate a different level of interest in, in restaurants here than might be in other parts of Norman. But, you know, we, we think this, this project is not going to cause Norman to get smaller, it's going to cause Norman to get bigger, be more of an attraction. So there's every reason to believe that all the districts within Norman today that are functioning well now could function well in the future. If there are, and I'm not sure which projects you're talking about in the past, but if there are some restaurant clusters or whatever that didn't work, there were probably some reasons structurally or infrastructure-wise that they weren't going to work from a, from a market perspective. So we think this arrangement has every, every opportunity to work for the long term, because you've got other, other uses around it, including an arena that brings people from well outside the city of Norman. And that's why we think better restaurants will, will look at this as a prime location.
Well, and that, that makes me feel a little bit better. I mean, I'm not, I think our, our districts are very unique and they all have their own special features that make Norman Norman. But I guess my fear is, you know, I'm, I'm pulling for like a House Blues and we get a TGI Fridays or something. And I, and I know I'm not the only one that shares this concern, so, but I, I mean, that makes sense that, you know, you've talked often about the arena being the anchor. Well, what does that mean? And so it would be the attraction piece.
Yeah, I think.
That's what the C of S study documents is, you know, how that can be a, a, a successful thing, which will generate other value for the surrounding real estate.
I need a comment on some of that. I think there's.
Councilmember Alex.
When you look at, I mean, just instance today, someone mentioned, I got a haircut. Today, I wa, I pulled into Hibden Tires in University North Park, left my car there during lunch, walked over and got a haircut, walked over to PDQ, yes, it's not a local owned restaurant, but I think it's the only one besides one in Edmond, and then went back and got my car. And so I did that all, completed that all during lunch hour, and there's not really a lot of other spots in Norman that you can do stuff like that. I think you also look at the local, being someone who likes to, you know, open up new businesses, I mean, you've got to have people who are also willing to go and invest in those areas. And right now, if, you know, we have to cultivate that entrepreneurship community to be able to want to go build those places. And so we can mix this together with what we're doing, you know, in the economic development plan, and look at ways to, you know, make these things available. If you look at even Chesapeake Arena, if you look at what they've done, they've pulled out the stand that just says hot dogs, and now it's Schwab's. You know, they're putting in locally, they're putting in local infusion into these places and getting the local operators to, you know, you may not like Taco Mile, it is an Oklahoma-owned company, and they have the Taco Mile inside there now, not the Bob's Taco Stand that just is being benefited by the developer or whoever. So I think as we look at the vision of this facility, we can get those local people involved. And if they want, you know, if you're the candy shop in Norman, then you need to go approach the developers and say, hey, I want to be in your arena, and I want to be the official, you know, in-line little store where you can buy your novelties or whatever. So I think there is some, you know, some collaboration that can happen, but you got to have ready and willing parties, not just on the development, but also people in Norman and business owners and entrepreneurs who are ready to go do that. And so I think through all the projects we have going right now, it's a reality that can happen as we, you know, encourage the entrepreneurship in Norman.
Last thing I'd say before I turn it over, based on what you kind of both said, with the whole being able to do all that in one time, I really, we went to the ACOG thing and the electric vehicle plugin. Why do we not have that already in North Park in the heart of our shopping and restaurants? I mean, it's right off I-35. I hear Moore is building one at their Walmart. Like, we can do better than that.
No, we have to get one quick.
Oh, yeah, I can tell you, if you're a restaurant owner, call Tesla. They put, they put two charging stations at my parking lot for free. It doesn't cost me anything. You can charge your Tesla at my building. All I had to do is call them and say I went to charging spots and you can do that now.
That's a good thing to know.
So, I mean, that's, but of course, they're going to look at, they're going to look at traffic counts. I'm right off I-35, so they said you're a great location. So there is availability, but you have to have, but then again, you have to have ready and willing owners to say, I'm going to give up those two parking lot, parking spots to do that.
That sounds so simple.
There is some.
The private industry solved their problem.
We will see. I just, that was one of the mayor's four, four questions that I didn't forget on Mary. You said bike share, we rode in the PUD, that we would work with campus cruisers to come over here. Charging stations, yes.
I mean, that's a perfect place for, for bikes. People can get a bike and.
And go live down Legacy Trail. Back and forth. We think it's perfect. So that's been written in the PUD. The charging stations, I didn't write in the PUD yet, but I will do that. That was discussed with the team and they said no problem on that. I think it is almost every day now that we have those, so I think that was your four questions.
Okay, you, Councilmember Castleberry, you, and then you. Okay.
I just want to follow up on, on the traffic, Mr. O'Leary. We talked about this, it might be $5 million, $7 million, ACOG stuff like this. If this is in the TIF, okay, and say we don't do TIF, wherever, we just currently say as-is, we don't do this project, but we still need to expand 24th Street regardless, okay? We are not on the hook for any more additional costs for traffic improvements than what we've already got allocated project plan, correct? Any additional traffic improvements in there would be on the developer.
That would be an argument we would make. We would go back to development agreement number one and see what those improvements were, and see if all of those improvements were actually contemplated and included in that assessment. I don't think they were. I don't think they really contemplated going further north and then connecting and making a new intersection into flood. So I'm not sure all of those were contemplated, but yes, we would work collaboratively with the developer to make sure they paid their portion of their commitment through development agreement number one. And what that said is the city paid $11.5 million in any cost over and above that for the contemplated traffic improvements would be the developer's responsibility, and we would stick to that. Now, additional improvements beyond what was contemplated is something we would have to negotiate. And we have put some placeholders into the draft project plan for additional traffic and roadway improvements that were not contemplated originally, that may be required if we move forward into this more intense development on the north half. So there will be some placeholders in the TIF to address some of those questions that we can't get ACOG money for, that will finish it up.
That's my point.
That's it.
One thing I would add, Councilmember, is one of the challenges, we are having lots of conversations with the developer, appreciate their cooperation, but where this gets complicated is looking at the larger network. For instance, interchange at Rock Creek Road that was never anticipated, that's on the state interstate highway system. That could be a 20 or $30 million project by itself. A new interchange at Tecumseh, another $30 million. Those are the things that we really are focused on. We're not so much focused on the traffic transportation through the internal, the University of North Park that we're already identified as Jeff and Kim. Our concern, ODAC's concern, is the big interchange issues and the big intersections of flood and Tecumseh that were not really anticipated in the original focus. And we hope that this new discussion will start to look at the larger network, and that's where the big numbers will come in. And we don't know who will pay those costs.
I mean, the developer right now goes out and sets at the flood in Tecumseh in the morning during rush hour. People aren't coming in and out of the TIF. That traffic in rush hour in the morning is not being pushed from the TIF. There's no, yeah, because I take it a lot in the morning, able to get here to morning meetings, I mean, so they're going to, they're going to say, well, why would I pay for it when I can go sit out there and there's no one coming in and out of our development? So that's where, like you said, the bigger picture is all of that area is growing, not just the TIF.
And that was the discussion today, I can tell you, when we sat down with the secretary, it was, it was the bigger discussion. And it was the bigger discussion of far beyond this project, of the entire I-35 corridor study. So we, we, I think, are in process of collaborating with them and figuring that out, but that's a long discussion, so.
Michelle, let me follow up with that. So we don't do this, you know, we always talk about being the second, you have a million second guy, I said the first guy. Second guy comes along and says, okay, I'm not going to do the arena, I'm just going to piecemeal it. When you piecemeal this, we would do like a traffic impact study for that particular project. And so when each one of those little project comes on and says, okay, well, you really don't have that much impact, so you really don't have to widen the road. Next guy comes along and says, well, you really don't, and all of a sudden, we got five guys who really don't have that much impact individually, but all five of them really do. And that's on the city, that's on the city.
I don't think that's.
As opposed to the.
We, we have asked for the developers to update the entire traffic impact analysis. In fact, council ordered a similar update in 2016, so I can show you some really good updated information about traffic impacts. But the one that, the last one the developer did was 2009. The interchange at Robinson had not been approved, the Rock Creek Bridge wasn't there. So naturally, they have to update information that is disorderly outdated right now. And yes, we hope that in the PUD language that we're, that we're working with Mr. Reger on for tomorrow night's consideration with planning commission, that we are recommending, and I think their traffic engineers are acknowledging that we need to update the entire network in terms of traffic impact analysis, and not just one little preliminary plat at a time. That's really not effective.
But if you, by doing this master plan like that, at least you, does that not help you come up with that master plan or the traffic, master plan better? Because you kind of have an idea this is a good residential, as opposed to this is all zone residential, it's personal, we really don't know what's going, we don't know if Bellis is going in there or.
But it's helpful to do it at the time. We have, have a preliminary plat that we know what we're doing. For instance, it's my understanding that the Garber report anticipated 500,000 square feet of new retail. Well, that's not going to happen here. So that, that automatically says we need to readjust and figure out what the TIA says for what is actually to be planned. For an arena that is dumping off hours for residential, that is this square footage and this density. We then know, though, what that is, and then the engineers can do their work.
So I guess my point is by master planning it, that helps us come up with these informations, make these decisions, as opposed to, let's just let it develop on its own, piecemeal, piecemeal, and we'll worry about traffic later on.
Yeah. The other thing I think it does, it puts us in position to negotiate with ODAC, which is the owners and managers of the big city interstate system. And they appreciate knowing what's happening, and that might help them prioritize the state contributions, federal contributions in the interstates. We can't do that on our own, or, or can we make this developer do it all either? Because it's going to be a partnership between several entities to get those multi-million dollar interchanges built.
Well, I think one thing, the last comment is, I think we also have to look at, this might be an Emily question, is if we know we're going to widen 24th with a six lane, seven lanes, how are we going to do that? You know, I, I think we know by widening Lindsay Street, it affected the sales tax in that area. And so if we're going to widen 24th, I think we need to make the assumption it's going to affect the sales tax in this area. And so how do, how do we factor that into the increment financing and stuff? And that, that's why I kind of want to make that point, is, okay, even if it does affect the sales tax in that area, it really doesn't matter to us from an increment standpoint, because it just, it affects the bank finance standpoint. We're still protected.
We are still protected, though, we, we have to be sure that what are, you know, I talked about this last time I had the opportunity to be in front of you, which was that if the city decides that they do want to move forward with the entertainment district and the arena, we need to set forth a structure that will make it work.
Correct.
So that it will finance, because otherwise, it just means we're putting in place a structure that won't work, and that means the project won't happen. And then it's a waste of everybody's time and resources. So we would need to look closely at, you know, if, if the changing of the road did impact sales tax generation, that would have to be addressed in our projections and reflected appropriately.
The businesses along Tecumseh, though, are not, those are, those are not in the TIF. Some of them are.
We are recommending that the new development that's right there be included in a new TIF, should a new TIF be adopted. But that means nothing for that business. I mean, they're, you know.
No, it doesn't.
They're just paying.
Which, which area?
We, we originally were going to also include about 18 acres that Southwest Wire owns, but in discussion with Southwest Wire, they've asked that we take that out. So that, that portion right there, we would take out, but we would include the development that's occurring just on the south side of Tecumseh into TIF number four.
Yeah, let me, I mean, I guess, it's a question for Southwest Wire, whether you're included in that or not, it doesn't affect your property tax rate.
It has absolutely no impact.
What do you care whether you're in the district or not? What's the impact, I mean?
But we've had discussions about that. We're okay with that. We're, we're fine.
But that's right. It does not change how a property.
You're not adversely affected or?
No.
Positively affected of being in there.
Unless you have the opportunity to receive assistance in development financing.
I think Councilmember Wilson is still waiting.
I got a list again. So I'm curious on south, this is, I don't want to derail this too, but south Rock Creek, the south part of this, what, what are the sizes? What's the minimum, is there any small spaces in there? What are the retail, what are the retail space sizes?
There's small stuff in the south.
Existing right now?
Existing, being built, was that?
Jeff, do you have any?
I don't mean.
I mean, there's places the size of this room in there. There's like, I mean, Pure Bars, pretty small. There's a little yogurt shop.
Yeah, are you talking about what's anticipated next?
Yeah, well, and then into the next one, because we're.
I think it's.
There's a point that, well, south side right now, what's the minimum space? Is there, is there a minimum space that we built out or was built, no, we, but the developer built out? Is there any microspaces is what I'm kind of getting at? More 500 to 1,000 square, 1,500 square foot spaces.
Subway shop.
There's Subway, there's GG's, there's.
So on the north of here, you've got, you, you, when we do this next plan, we've got housing, we've got, you know, we're talking about moving away from a local field, because everything's a big chain. And this whole thing, everything's a chain. I don't know that there's anything in there that's not a chain.
I don't think that's determined yet, but Jeff, do you want to address, go ahead.
I guess my, I'm curious about is two things. Small spaces that would accommodate actual small businesses, not, you know, $500 million a year small businesses. And, and what's the rent like? Are we above average in that south area? And will that reflect in the north area? So I'm, I'm looking at from a business perspective, a small business perspective. How, you know, I, I currently, my business can't move into anything in that whole place because I couldn't afford it. So what kind of things are we doing to make it affordable for startups in that area as well as Chili's?
First, I'd ask Jeff to discuss sizing. Jeff, have you thought about that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, the typical depth of all the buildings that line the streets that lead up to the arena is about 60 feet, which is sort of the, the depth that, that most retail developers like to use these days. It's much shallower than they used to be. And those will be, you know, varying sizes, because, I mean, it's primarily.
And those will be, you know, varying sizes, because, I mean, it's primarily food, coffee, bars, things like that. And I'll tell you that most of the successful projects that we're involved in today, the developers want to get a blend of local restaurants that would already have some name recognition in Norman or Oklahoma City or something, as well as a, a national, national one. So you have a mix of the two. But that way, it, it has this more sort of curated feeling about it, as opposed to everything's from out of town. So I, I, I think that's probably what the selected developer would, would want to try to do. At least that's what we're seeing in other projects. So those are all sixty feet deep, but they could range, yes, you could have some five hundred foot coffee guys or a chocolate guy or something like that. And then you'd have four, five thousand square foot restaurants too. I don't think you're gonna get a big ten thousand square foot cheesecake, cheesecake factory or something like that. I, I'm not even sure that would be right for the project. But to answer your question, there would be a range of small and large scale. And I think they would take an approach of wanting to kind of curate it so that there's some familiarity in some of the names that you see that you know from other parts of Norman or from the state.
Thank you.
There's no restriction, there's no restriction on local owners can't go out there, right?
No.
I mean, I can make a business decision to put my business out there and pay a little higher rent because I now have twenty thousand cars driving by my business every day versus four thousand, I guess, somewhere else.
And a ten thousand seat arena right now.
That's just a business decision.
Startups don't, don't generally have that. Startups don't, I mean, I know this probably isn't the startup goal, it's not there, but I think that that's what makes a community unique and interesting is startups and, you know.
Well, put some, I mean, if you're, if you like that idea, the startups, and I like it, then put something in the project plan that puts some incentives in there to get those people out there. You know, put money in there to get, to subsidize.
Ms. Pomeroy would like to.
We don't need you.
If I'm, I mean, the, the project plan is absolutely equipped for that. I mean, that's what this NEDC land and this office development is all about. And that's where we're really focused on non-retail job growth, non-retail job opportunity, businesses that do not exist, or businesses that exist in Norman that need to expand, businesses that need to receive a lower rent for a little while until they get on their feet. You know, the project plan is equipped with an economic development project cost allocation that allows for exactly that type of thing. And we know from the experience with ME that the opportunity to have this density around it, both in terms of people visiting, but also in terms of people living nearby, only boosts the opportunity both for visibility and for people that could potentially be employed by those type of businesses. So that's one may, I mean, from our, as economic development professionals, that's what we're interested in. I mean, that's what makes real differences in communities. Job generation, non-retail growth. That's where we think Norman should be focusing its effort.
And that's what the economic development strategic plan has also.
If you could come out and live, work, play, that's a big part of that, right? Is, is, is all of this work, live, work, play throughout the nation. And, and Jeff, you've done many projects like that, kind of discuss that interplay if you will.
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's why, kind of what I was saying before is that right now you have ME. Well, what are the chances of getting more MEs until you get some sort of mix of uses out there that creates a sort of a dynamic synergy between uses where they support one another? So I, I think you're gonna get more office and, and as, as was mentioned, job generating companies coming to this project because there are multiple different housing types to live in. There is a vibrant entertainment zone and places to eat, places to walk and have ice cream at night, go to Starbucks or whatever. There's a parking garage which serves the arena, but it also will attract some good office tenants to be on I-35. They could also have covered parking. So there's just a lot of ways that something that serves one use also benefits another. And that's what classic mixed use is really all about. That's why it is the development type that is most favored today by developers. Single use is really seen as something that has a short lifespan or may not survive. Mixed use is something that has a chance of surviving well in the future.
Councilmember Holman.
So that's one of the things, I don't really see much mixed use in this area. I mean, the entertainment district would have offices above it, but not residential. And developments like Terra, it looks great, but it's not mixed use. I mean, there's no storefronts on the bottom, which does not create any activity along 24th Avenue as far as pedestrians. And an issue I see there is we have high density development on the east side of 24th with no commercial on the bottom, so it's not mixed use. And then we might be asking people that live there to cross potentially six lanes of 24th Avenue in the future to go to Starbucks in the entertainment district or whatever. I'm probably not gonna do that if I live up there. I'm, and I might maybe because I ride my bike a lot, but I could see people getting in their car and driving across the street, which is the problem we have on the south side right now, is that people that shop at Target don't walk to Starbucks or Chipotle. They drive across the street to get to those places. And I think we're, you know, I think all of us want to have a vision of a place where people don't do that. So that would be my concern about what we currently talk about mixed use. Does that mean, well, we just have like four little districts that are different, multifamily entertainment district, new urbanist, high tech? To me, mixed use is a building that is multiple uses and has commercial or retail on the bottom floor, possibly offices on the second floor, and then apartments, condos or whatever on the above floors.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. And some of that, the limitation there is just what the market can bear. We already have so much retail on the south side that to do a lot of buildings that have more retail and restaurant below and, and office and, and residential above across the whole site would be, you'd have empty spaces. I, I don't think you'd be able to lease all those. So this is kind of a hybrid solution based on the fact that you've got so much retail to the south. And, but we did want to put office above the, the restaurants in the arena district because we feel like those could be successful. I, I would, I would hope that we could minimize the widening or perception of widening of 24th, because you're absolutely right, the ability to cross that at multiple points is, is very critical. We've got senior living across there, we've got multifamily. So in this case, people getting from a multifamily across into a walkable environment where they could have dinner and, and maybe have their office and so forth, that's the version of mixed use that we're able to provide here, given the conditions that already existed. So I, I totally get the point, but we think for the market, this is the right blend of those things.
And so on the senior living part, in the agreement, development agreement, it would say that piece of property can only be senior living. And what does that necessarily mean? Not assisted living, or is it just folks over sixty or fifty-five or sixty-five that don't need medical attention but just want to live in this area? I mean, what, what does senior living mean for this area?
I think that would be determined by the market.
Let me, first, there's a legal issue there when you describe in real estate senior living, there's a fair housing requirement that they have.
But it would be technically getting government money. So wouldn't we be able to stipulate because it is getting public financing? Like the Willows or?
I don't think so, it's not that type of a project. This would just be TIF for the development work. That particular facility would not get the direct funding of that. So senior living, you, if you go and call any facility, senior living has to be eighty percent occupied by fifty-five or older. And you can, you lose that ability to market that way if you slip below that. That's to answer your question, what senior living is. As to what specifically it becomes would be what developer comes forward to, to, to put that into fruition.
Sean, can we just not put some pedestrian bridges in here?
Before we.
On, on the ULI, we talked about the Griffin over there. We talked about, I mean, to get over to Griffin, there was walkable bridges over there that all landscaped, I mean, that's, so we're crossing the opposite street that way. Can we not just put a couple of walkable?
Have you seen any pretty walkable bridges in Oklahoma City?
Nope.
I've seen them in California.
Dallas.
They do exist.
ADA slope and stuff, they'd be so long and concrete.
They can be made.
It's very doable.
I think, did you see some in Venice? There's some really pretty ones in Venice. Let, let me go back, Jeff, please, to the senior living area, because as a senior, I kind of, you know, I'm trying to get my head around this idea. There, there might be some of the townhomes or other areas that I would want to live in. What has been your experience with designating an area for seniors? I mean, we, we don't have a whole lot of that in Norman. I, I do know that we need affordable housing. I do know that we need more assisted living and more graduated care. But what's your experience been with just a senior living area for people over a certain age in this kind of development?
Well, you know, I don't have a lot of personal experience with senior living, but our firm is doing more and more of that. And it is a development type that has a name, they call it senior living, and it's sort of a relatively new thing in the last few years because of the aging market that has the demand for that. So it's, it's, it's an apartment condo sort of complex. It's nicely landscaped, doesn't look a lot different than an apartment complex, but it's very walkable. And, and in this case, a lot of value would be added because we've located it directly across where there'd be a traffic light to be able to cross 24th to get into the district. So all I know is we're doing more and more of them, and it's not a, it's not a nursing home sort of a thing. It's for people who are able to sort of get around and, and, as was mentioned, over fifty-five. So we'll, we'll, I think what we'll find is how much the developer thinks that that's a viable element for this market. But it is, it is more and more a part of, of traditional developers' plan to incorporate some of that into a mixed, into a multi, multifamily project.
Okay. That, yeah, that partially answers my question. I'm just wondering how successful they, they are. And I know there's certainly parts of the country where you have a lot of developments that are specifically for seniors. And obviously, some people really like those.
We've done a couple of them, and I'd be happy to share them with you.
Okay, all right, maybe, maybe we can talk more about that.
I, I was just gonna say that, if I could add on to that, Terra, when you talked to that, Gary Brooks, a significant number of their inquiries come from people that are empty nesters.
Yeah, and I can, I can definitely see that where you've got a, a mixed population. I just, the idea of mixed age groups, I, I still really like that idea, so. Yeah, Councilmember Clark.
All right, I've got a few things. I actually wrote down Bridge, because if you look at this map, the, the leading entertainment district, you could put one in there. It would seem that would kind of solve that, but it's worth looking into, but I had the same thought.
And this is page eleven, Jeff, we're looking at.
And are you, of the fifteen acres that are parks, are any of them dog parks?
I don't think we've gotten to that detail yet, but certainly we would.
Well, you better write down Dog Park, because it's coming. It is.
We don't need more Dog Parks, we don't need more Dog Parks, Jeff.
Now, there, there is a, there is a large contingent of people that would argue with you about that, okay.
Jeff, go ahead.
Well, no, I was just gonna say, the Dog Park is a really important feature of a lot of these multifamily projects we're doing today, especially where you have younger people who are out meeting each other while they're walking their dogs. And so it's, it's a part of the social life of these projects. So you really would want to provide a part of the place.
And then this may be a question more for the athletic department than for you, Sean, but I've had several residents contact me that are season ticket holders, and they're very upset about the, you know, prospect of their season ticket prices going up. What do I say to that? You're gonna get a better facility? And then they say Lloyd Noble's just fine, so.
Well, the surveys that the athletic, the athletic department did of season ticket holders came back that they were willing to pay more for a better facility. So I think those are the outliers.
But, but the outliers that have never called me or emailed me or anything.
I, I'm saying what, what the athletic department has said. I asked the same question, like, are you gonna jack up ticket prices? It says, yes, we are going to raise ticket prices on some of these options on this. And we surveyed our, our fans, and they were willing to pay more. That's, so that's why they're willing to make this investment. They, they've checked with their, I mean, I think Joe C knows what he's doing.
I, I remember reading that as well, but I wanted to share that concern because I am getting phone calls about it. Maybe there could, and I'm just spitballing here, if you've been a season ticket holder of OU basketball, you are rewarded. If you've done it for twenty years and your ticket prices are locked in or something, I don't know. So I have communicated that concern. The last one that I have is this clarification of where we are in more of the TIF development, which I know is kind of outside where we're at with putting senior center funds in there. Because I shared the sneak preview of the East Norman Library, and the only comment I've gotten on it is, well, when are we breaking ground on the senior center? So I would just like an update on where we're at with that. Because my understanding of the Twenty First Century Senior Citizens Association, they don't really care where the money comes from. They're ready for a standalone center, so I would love an update on that.
I think Jeff, Jeff can answer that question.
Next week, we'll probably have another executive session about the Griffin lease and how that is progressing. And there may be a funding source there as far as location. It's still tied to the North Base lease, which would be the, the location for three Norman Ford projects, the Aquatics, Multi-Sport, and potentially the Senior Center. We, we do, all indications we get is if this project moves forward, then we're in a really good position for that lease being approved. I don't know that they're absolutely tied together, but certainly the indications we are getting.
I would throw out, my understanding is they weren't tied together. And it is concerning that they are now tied together, because I feel like we had a deal and then we didn't. And it is what it is, but I wanted to share my frustration about that.
I understand. And there, of course, they're changing leadership. And so the new president will be installed July first. And what we've been told is he wants to take a look at that lease before it's finalized, and so that may be part of it.
Okay, we're getting close to eight o'clock. Any, any final questions? It was a one hour stretch. No, we, we didn't, we didn't say how long it was.
We're getting hungry.
Yeah.
Just thought I'd throw that out there.
Okay, before we fall apart, let's, let's finish up. We, we've held it together really well here, so.
Come on, guys.
Emily has some information about HBS and that consultant.
Oh, the independent?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
HBS.
Is that okay? Should I do that tonight?
How long is that gonna take?
I will be brief and succinct.
I like it.
Respectful of your time. So I, just a couple of points I wanted to make that I think that the discussion that we've just had leads well into, you know, some reasons why the city might consider doing this project are, are many. I, you know, and I just wanted to hit on, on a few of those. I think looking at the master plan did that for us a little bit. But a really big one is over five hundred million dollars in private investment. That's what this master plan contemplates. That's a reason why the city might want to go forward in, in approving the PUD and/or approving an amended project plan. New-to-market living options, which Mr. Gunning has just walked us through. Non-retail job generation, which helps retain the young professionals that I know you have economic studies indicating that those are the twenty-five to forty-four year olds are the people that are leaving the city of Norman. Immediate relief to the city's general fund. We've, you know, based on your feedback, incorporated that into an amended project plan. Maximizing returns to the affected taxing jurisdictions. Providing incremental revenues directly to Norman Public Schools, which I know, all of you know that that would not occur without the Anchorage District. Completing the original project goals and objectives. Obtaining the land for important Norman Forward projects, including the Senior Center. And I just wanted to indicate that there was some information that I think was incorrectly stated at our last meeting altogether, which is that, you know, TIFs do not impose new taxes. So there was discussion about MAPS in Oklahoma City, you know, that's a new tax, that's why it was voted on by the people. Norman Forward, new tax, that's why it's voted on by the people. There are many TIF districts in the city of Oklahoma City that help boost what MAPS does. But they are independent and not voted on by the people of Oklahoma City.
Isn't the Marriott Gardens area a TIF?
Yes. All of downtown is a TIF. I mean, there are eleven TIF districts in Oklahoma City.
Twelve.
There are eleven TIF districts and four more that are authorized to be triggered at a later date. So it's, it's a significant part of Oklahoma City's economic development program. But I just wanted to correct that piece, you know, that we are not proposing new, new increased taxes and anything that the amended project plan says. Okay, so those are just some high level things that I just want this to be in the city, in the city council, the voters, the decision makers' minds as they're considering. It's really easy to get in the weeds, and I, and I want us to get in the weeds. We have to put together a structure that will work and that will benefit the city's general fund, and that will benefit all the affected taxing jurisdictions. general fund, and that will benefit all the affected taxing jurisdictions. But I do think we need to remind ourselves of, of some of the high-level efforts that could be impacted by this project.
Okay. I think Councilmember Wilson has a comment.
Oh, I'll try to make it quick because I'm, I'm getting cranky. But I, I do think that we, while we, I think I all understand that we're not generating a new tax, or we're not, but we do dilute our general fund with these diversions to projects in a special area. And so I do think we have a risk if there's a performance failure. So I would, I think it's valid that we address that. And, and I, maybe I don't fully understand what Mr. Castleberry was saying earlier about the bank takes all the, absorbs if it's a huge giant flop failure. But what about that dilution from our general fund that we're having on sales tax that we are in a position right now, am I wrong, where we've diluted and diverted that money to projects? And now we're having, you know, other situations where we probably could use that money in a different way. So it's something to be.
I think the key factual difference there is the revenues that are being used to pay authorized project costs would not exist but for the investment that was made. So but for all the development that's happened on the south of Rock, the land south of Rock Creek Road, there would be no incremental, there would be no increment of revenues to be used to pay those project costs.
Well, and we can argue that we kind of sucked and diverted our sales tax over into that area, so.
I, I think that cannibalization argument is real and one that the city addressed very well in, in the use of the transfer adjustments in the 2006 TIF. That means to date that over $10 million that if, in, on straight percentages, that would have gone to the project was moved back into the city's general fund. And that's because of those formulas that were put in place in 2006 when the original project planned.
Annualized growth rate adjustment.
Pardon?
Annualized growth rate adjustment.
Well, that's the second protection that the city put in place. There is the transfer adjustment as one protection, and the, and average annualized growth rate protection, which was the second one. And that has, you know, placed revenues back in the general fund that, just on a straight percentage split, would have gone to projects. So those were efforts, I think, well-thought-out and well-utilized efforts to try to handle those cannibalization issues. And it's not a perfect science. It doesn't mean that every penny, you know, was grabbed. But I do think it was an appropriate and effective way to handle the cannibalization question. And one that we are looking really hard at and, and what we would recommend to you moving forward. Absolutely.
I, I don't think I've asked this question publicly, so I'll go ahead and throw it out there. One of the, the problems I have with this whole situation, as we talk about increment finance, and we talk about using sales tax dollars and ad-alarm dollars, I am going to, if I were to approve something like this, then go to voters and ask them for stormwater utility because we need money. So I actually had kind of thrown out there privately a few times that I would prefer to see a commitment from this area towards stormwater dollars. And, and, and I don't know legally what that looks like. I'm looking at Anthony for some sort of, but I know it's, it can't be a stormwater utility, but it can relieve our stormwater problem dollars-wise. Throwing it out there to be thought about as we look at whatever this looks like next.
They will pay connection fees, a stormwater connection, all the development.
Connection.
Stormwater connection.
But I'm talking about our citywide issue of.
If we have a stormwater utility, they will pay into it also, right? I mean, nothing can be exempted.
Correct, yeah, there's no, no allowance for us to give any exemptions.
I think her question is, is there a way, if we don't have a stormwater utility, that this particular area.
To earmark funds.
This particular area can pay stormwater utility that no other area in town does.
Not sure I understand the question. I'm saying.
Part of the TIF would have a stormwater utility in the development agreement.
And it doesn't even have to be stormwater utility. It could be a commitment for.
That would be a financing.
I know. It's, we're thinking creatively here, y'all. And I'm hungry, so it may not be well thought out. But that would be my concern, is, is saying, yeah, we're going to spend $102 million or whatever that dollar amount is, and now I need you, guy that lives on 180th Street, to pay me $6.25 a month to take care of our ongoing stormwater utility problem. This is where I have a lot of heartburn with the whole scenario.
I'm, I'm just going to throw this out. I mean, that is something to consider, and I know it's been discussed, but I really think we have an obligation as a council. I know a lot of people have heartburn with that. But we don't, we don't fix our systemic problem without doing two things. Whether we do the TIF, whether we get rid of the TIF, any of those things, they will make a difference in our general fund. But it is not enough to make up for the generally escalating cost of stormwater. And it's up to us to convince or educate or talk to our constituents and explain that to them. This is not a fix for stormwater. And stormwater is not a total fix for our budget. We need both things, and that's our job, I think, to educate people. I can't convince everybody they should do that. A lot of people don't think they should do it. They haven't thought they should do it. But I feel like that's my job to do that. So Councilmember Cardjala.
I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Madam Mayor, but in order for us to think about a project of this nature, as big as it is too, one of the questions that I've had that I haven't asked, that I thought maybe I would ask on the side, but it is worth saying, is, you know, then how does this project help our stormwater problem? So if, if the, if the investors or the master developer, I don't know if I'm using the right term, because I'm getting tired and my blood sugar's getting low too, but if, if they're really interested in making sure that Norman, because I think that Norman as a community wants us to see us handle problems simultaneously, instead of going, oh, stormwater, we're just going to ask you to pay a utility. Well, then how would this big, big project help us get there? So that we see that commitment from this, right? Stormwater commitment. So look at all this concrete, for instance, right? Are you going to use, what's the pervious pavement? Are you going to do all these fancy things? And I know that's probably coming. I don't know if that's going to be in your presentation tomorrow.
Yeah.
But those are, is this going to be an LED arena? Are we going to be the first city to build one of these? Can we put solar panels on this thing? Right? So that, you know, we have an environmental, you know, fascinating place that serves its purpose, is environmentally interesting, brings in business, maintains business, brings in young people, keeps young people. I mean, it's, it's, it's a selling point. So that's, I want to back up what we're talking about here. I do think that's important. So it's incumbent then upon this project to kind of sell itself as this is how we can help or take the lead on stormwater, even if it's not a straight fee.
And I think, I think that's exactly it. I think that's the whole thing. Are we going to be, is this something we can say? This is going to be brand-new, this is going to be.
Throw it right over.
Sean, can you tell us if there's going to be pervious or what else? It's in the bud.
I would love to.
Throw it right over. I mean, because I think that's important.
That's Mr. Con, Mohammed Con here is with us from SMC. And we.
You're like, that's me, that's me.
We discussed this with Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary left. Ah, I lost Mr. O'Leary. So we, we were in a meeting this past two weeks ago. I just, please let me answer this question because I'm glad you asked me that. That we were challenged early on, and me, I think you were in as well, as to what are we going to do to elevate this project to difference-maker in those terms? And we absolutely engaged on that point.
Green, green.
Mr. Con handed me your bio-retention areas, your vegetative filter strips. I won't go on into detail of these, but porous pavement. There are easy roll grass pavings, we can go on and on. And I wrote it into the PUD, and you will read it. It will be for you. But it basically says the use of best management practices for low-impact design as a preferred site designer approach will be incorporated into areas within the Entertainment District and the PUD. And so again, we can't show you the location because I don't have a master developer site plan to put them on. So the best I can do for you, but I've absolutely done it, is to write it into the PUD that we would ask you to adopt, and that as Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Sturts worked with us to agree that they like this language, that this commits it. Another thing I would just say, you talked about we're paving all that with concrete. I wish Mr. O'Leary was here because we talked about this in a meeting specifically. And that gets into, as I understand it, more of a quantitative approach of, of the, of the basin. And as they informed us very specifically in that meeting, we brought it up because we said, we've heard this, and they said, it's not an issue. We are fine with it. So they're fully aware of that. We've discussed it. We included it in the bud, along with the bike sharing, along with the carts, along with, with charging stations. I'm happy to, and we absolutely want to be a difference-maker.
And every house can be hers right now.
And, and, and let me, let me say, Mr. Gunning, I, I hope Jeff is still online with us, but we have talked about LEED neighborhood. Jeff, if you could discuss that briefly.
Yes, we have. I'm, I'm not sure about the buildings per se, but as the master planner, this would be a fairly good and relatively easy project to get LEED in the neighborhood development. A lot of that has to do with orientation of buildings and providing sidewalks and tree-lined streets, and the charging stations that have been mentioned helps that, bike stations. So I think there's a LEED designation that we could get for the overall master plan. Just to make it be seen how much of that could be incorporated into the buildings themselves. And a lot of that would be up to the developer.
But that plays right into what we've discussed in this room, and we've heard you discuss, and we're happy that you have, becoming sort of a hallmark and a beacon of environmental design. LEED, LEED neighborhoods would be that, really. So we appreciate that, and we, we, we respect that.
Okay, I'm going to bring us back to Emily so she can close this out.
I'll talk about HVS. No, that's fine. I'm just so glad to have the opportunity to talk to you guys again. Okay, HVS Conventions Sports and Entertainment Facilities Consulting was engaged on May 29th to perform an independent review of the studies that, that have been conducted to date on this proposed project. HVS for decades has performed analyses, analyses of the feasibility of convention centers, stadiums, arenas, civic centers, sports facilities, tourists, entertainment, tourist attractions, entertainment areas, and other economic development initiatives. Tom Hazensky is a principal there. He is the lead on performing the independent review for us. He specialized in the analysis of convention sports and entertainment markets. His education is in municipal finance and public policy. He has represented clients all over the country, including very recently, the Alliance for Economic Development of Oklahoma City engaged him to perform an analysis of the proposed convention center and convention center hotel, the MAPS Convention Center, Convention Center Hotel in Oklahoma City. He also, for the private developer, performed an analysis of the First National redevelopment. So he's familiar with Oklahoma City markets. I've had half a dozen conversations with him. I, I personally sent him the Calisyn RTKL master plan, the Calisyn RTKL development phasing spreadsheet, the CSNL report. Two portions of that report were provided directly by the OU Foundation pursuant to a confidentiality agreement because they deal specifically with, you know, fundraising efforts and other impacts that have a financial impact on the feasibility of the arena that aren't for public consumption. I sent Mr. Hazensky the report by Professor Dofenbach regarding project impacts, the report by the Department of Commerce supplementing Professor Dofenbach's report, and I've sent him the report by Dr. Rogers that provided an alternative analysis to Dr. Dofenbach's report. I know that you all have seen that. I forwarded that on to him so that he knows, you know, some of the conversations that are happening here on the ground. So he has all that in hand. They are performing an analysis of those documents. The scope includes the performance of an independent demand and financial models to test the reasonableness of the projections that are included in those reports, and seeks to understand a series of questions. I'll read a couple of them for you. Gaps or opportunities that, that are not identified that could either hinder or help the project? Are the building program details clearly articulated? Are inputs in the analysis reasonable, sound, and considerate of current market dynamics? Are the assumptions in the revenues and the expenses pro forma reasonable and in line with industry standards? Are the statements of net new impacts on the city and the community reasonable and sound?
So we're just going to look at net new impacts?
Yes.
I think that's key, Mac. We're looking at net new impacts to the city here.
Well, and then, then also, you said kind of models. Is there stressor, like, is that what you're saying? Is there stressors like bubbles and student loan bubble and millennial disconnect in, in, in income wages and that sort of thing in, in this? I know that I'm kind of throwing out some economic terms. I'm not.
I, um, they are, they are analyzing what models and techniques are used in the existing reports. So they will comment on whether they agree, disagree, what should be done differently in those existing reports.
I got you.
I got you. So they're going to comment on whether the methods and those modeling techniques are reasonable, sound, and in conformance with industry standards. And then a statement of the finançability, are those reasonable, sound, and considerate of market dynamics? So that's, that's the scope. And he has been given contacts of, of course, Professor Dofenbach, Professor Rogers, the CSNL contact, all, you know, people that he would need to reach out to, to talk to and ask questions. He, of course, has access to me and any information that I, that I could, you know, provide, I can help him with his analysis. He, he is top-notch. He's great. The proposal includes a visit to Norman to give a, you know, verbal presentation of his findings. So when, if and when we put together a schedule that works, you know, for the consideration of this project, he will be, you know, worked in at appropriate time to come talk to you directly. Councilmember Holman.
So he has not been hired by the University of Oklahoma, the foundation, or the city of Norman ever to do anything before?
I specifically asked about any type of relationship with the University of Oklahoma, the University of Oklahoma Foundation, CSNL, RTKL. There's a group called Legends that's related to the foundation and OU. He has no direct relationship to any of those entities.
And where's he from again? Chicago?
Chicago. And that's where the company's based. I, Councilman Holman, I did learn that he, not he, but HVS has represented the city of Norman in the past, in 2005. They did an economic analysis of the Embassy Suites Conference Center. So that's one point I wanted to specifically say because I know that you had, you had commented on, no relationship to Norman.
So do we have, we obviously probably have results of that.
Right. I, I have not seen it. I, I think, I think that they exist.
I mean, it was built.
It wasn't accurate.
In the city files.
Was it accurate? Yes, whatever they said about it. I mean, I know we built it, or they built, the Embassy Suites built it.
Right.
And we didn't buy it from them like we originally agreed to because we did the bridge instead.
Right. And I don't know the parameters of the study, but I'm sure it's in the files.
We can find that for you. I think maybe Anthony, you've got it. What was that guy's name? Hans? Hans Alsud? Something like that, something like that. But we have that.
It appears to be relatively successful.
Would we be able to, I mean, Embassy Suites is not going to give us financial information, I assume, to see whether those projections work out or not.
Do you have something to hand out to us?
We can ask.
I mean, if they said it's going to generate a bunch of money, but Embassy Suites is losing money on it every year.
We wanted to see if, how those projections came out. I mean, fortunately, I don't think we're, unless Embassy Suites volunteered for us, I mean, that'd be prior to our information or not going to give it to us. Probably not, but we can certainly ask.
They might if there's an arena at stake.
We can ask.
Are they subsidizing the conference center? Is it making money?
Okay. And this is just a, it's a, basically like a qualification sheet on HVS for, you know, for what it's worth, I thought. You might be interested in seeing a little bit about them. And it has Tom Hazensky's, you know, profile and resume in there. He'll be who we're working with directly. He and his associate, Alex Moon. And they come highly recommended, and he's been incredibly responsive to both quickly getting me a proposal to consider and also indicating a quick turnaround for his report.
Yeah, then we'd better know. Oklahoma Hotel and Conference Center. All right.
Can we get a copy of that conference? I'd just like to look at it, like, just.
Sure, we'll find it.
Format and style and.
That was a long time ago.
I know.[1785.44] It's still on the shelf for the other studies we have to talk about.
All right. I wanna...
Quarter, quarter order.
I wanna thank, uh, Sean Greger and I wanna thank Emily Pomeroy for coming and, um, spending this meeting with us. What? Oh, and I would like to thank the voice of Jeff Gunning, who is also with us. So, thank you very much for taking your time, Jeff, uh, to be with us and to...
Absolutely. Happy to do it.
And to help us out. It was very informative. Um, with, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor.
All in favor, we're adjourned.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Bye-bye.